Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Lake County School Board's Workshop of August 2nd, 2021. Before we begin the work of the district, let us stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the dark cloud, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll begin the meeting with public input. We have Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Smith, you know the drill, but for others, if you'll give your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kathy Smith, 4209 out of Wild Drive, Fruitland Park, Florida. And I'm here representing LCEA and many teachers. With the rising COVID cases throughout the state, we realize we're in one county, but many counties are having some issues. And so many teachers are concerned. So late yesterday afternoon, LCEA developed a survey to collect data. And especially after the governor's executive order of mandating no masks for public schools only. And the results you have, we received 425 responses in less than six hours, which is pretty good data for the small amount of time that we did in order to collect the data and have the information to present to you. In realizing that the data is there, even some non-members, because we put it out on Facebook, because we wanted everybody to have the opportunity to do the survey if they wanted to. You can see that most of them want masks, but we realize that that is a concern, but it's also something that we cannot adhere to. But there are other issues that we can develop and we can work through. And that's what we need to hopefully do in the next few weeks, hopefully. I know it's going to be difficult. But the safety protocols need to ensure that we do follow robust procedures in order to keep things rigorous, and they should be monitored. Some teachers had some concerns. I haven't been able to read through all of the comments, but the comments are there for you to look through and see. And again, they were members and non-members that made the comments. It's all anonymous, but you can see what is there. There were some, of course, that did not make any comments. And so I decided to delete those just for lack of having the copy and the pages. But you can see the ones that did actually make some comments there for you. And if you need anything else, just let us know. Thank you so much.
Very kind. Thank you. Mrs. Arnold?
Good morning. My name is Ann Arnold, and I live at Two Kristen Lane, Eustis, Florida. I also teach at Eustis High School. In light of the success of keeping Lake County schools open in the 2021 school year because of the safety measures that we had in place, including mandatory masking, I come today to ask you to keep or at this point, restore the mandatory mask mandate. It was not hard to enforce. Period. It was mandatory. Everyone had to do it. Ninety-five percent of the time, students were in compliance. We were told that, this was, I can't tell you exactly the date, but after there was collection of data, we were told that the times that we did have infections and quarantines necessary, we were told that the transmission was not happening in our classrooms. Without masks, it will be happening in our classrooms. Period. It's no harm. When I got dressed this morning, my mask was in my car. I put it on because it's part of my uniform. I spent the last week with my grandson. He's 11 years old, not eligible to be vaccinated yet. And putting his clothes on includes putting his mask on to go out in public. He was distressed when he walked in someplace and didn't have one and put his own shirt up over his face because he knew this was what he was supposed to do. So I plead with you to reconsider this. It's not a political issue. It's a medical issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we're gonna jump right into the agenda. And first up this morning is item 3.01. This is an overview of the budget with Mr. Scott Ward. So ask him to come up.
Good morning. Can y'all hear me? Is this on? Yeah, it's on. Okay. Will you bring up the presentation, please? Okay. First slide. Just want to kind of go over a little bit of the highlights of the end of last year before we start a conversation about the 2021-22 year. And then give you guys an opportunity to ask questions if you have any. I do appreciate the input that I've gotten from board members. I've had several board members who've contacted me and spent some time going through the budget. I do appreciate that. The first one is the end-of-year highlight for the general fund balance. And as you can see, we did very well, 2020-21. We had some unexpected decreases in costs. And of course, the state held us harmless for last year, which is really good for us financially. And you can see the trend of our district, the general fund balance, 2017 was 3.07. And that's the calculation of the fund balance ratio, the way the state does it. That is the unrestricted balance compared to the revenue of the district. You can see 2018, it was flat. 2019, we saw some improvement. 2020, we saw up to a 5.67. And at the end of 2020-21, we were at 8.88. So very good financial trend, some good, sound financial policies for the district, and they've returned very well. Plus, we've had some unexpected reduction in expenditures, and it's helped out very well. You can see in there on the restricted balances, you'll see a trend where there's some large restrictions at the end of the 2020-21 year. I'm gonna go over that in a little bit in detail in just a second. But a lot of that had to do with the additional funding that we received from Essor, replaced a lot of those restricted expenditures. Plus, we also had the Agfar land sale. That's included in that also. So next slide. You can see the Leesburg land sale at the top, $4.6 million. That is restricted funding. We also have a lot of the Cape funding at the schools, giving the block scheduling last year and giving a lot of the uncertainty. We didn't see a lot of expansion in expenditures in those last year. So we had an unexpected large carryover of those funds at the end of the year. The .75 millage supplemental academic construction schools budgets, again, that was unexpected. With the COVID shutdown during last summer, a lot of things didn't get spent during the summer in the prior year. And then advanced placement, and then all others. So $18.9 million. Next slide. Our health insurance fund, which is really important to us when we're considering the general fund, because if we don't have enough funding in our health insurance fund, we always have to take it from the general fund. So we wanted to make sure that we're carrying a healthy fund balance in there. If you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we were at zero, and we started funding it appropriately. And then again, because of COVID, we saw a decrease in claims expense, mainly because of COVID. We've also taken some measures and reduction, cost reduction, in those programs. And so from that, you see that we now have gone from a zero fund balance to a $14 million fund balance at the end of the year, which is equivalent to 105 days. As you recall, the state requires us to have at least a 60-day fund balance, and we're at 105. So very well-funded. Next slide. So for 2021-22, we are showing a $15.7 million reduction in FEFP funding. And that's just because of the reduction in FTE that's expected from the state next year. We hope those children show back up. And if they do show back up, we will not see that reduction. We will see, it should flatten out. We did include a 2-point, excuse me, a 2% salary increase for all employees. If you recall, when we were building the budget, we already had one offer on the table with our instructional bargaining unit and then our non-instructional bargaining unit at the same time. So we went ahead, since the offers were on the table, we went ahead and budgeted them in there, into our budget. We have a decrease in the board's contribution to the health insurance. Again, because our fund is fully funded and it has a surplus, we were able to actually reduce that contribution to the health insurance fund. We have an increase in the Florida retirement system contribution. We did increase $10 per student for school operating funding to give the schools a little bit more funding to operate their schools with. And again, this does not include any S or 2 or S or 3 funding at the time. Those are federal dollars, but because they haven't been awarded yet by the state, they were not included yet. So our general fund balance is carrying all the weight. Next slide. Without any additional S or 2 or S or 3 funding at this time. And so again, you can see the fund balance comparison, the 2017, 18, 19, 20, 21, and then the 21-22 budgeted. And you do see that it does drop below the board's 4%, 3.81. Again, a lot of that has to do with that reduction in FTE and FEFP funding. If those students do show back up in the fall, then we won't have that deficit. We will be above our 4%. If the students do not show back up, we will have some S or 2 funding and S or 3 funding that we can use to cover those teachers that are well below the class size in our schools. So we're not, although we see the decline in our budget, we don't expect that decline as it materializes. So just, and then, next slide. This is just our transparency webpage. I just included that in case if anybody's looking at our presentation, they can go to our transparency webpage, which I hope all of y'all are familiar with at this point in time. And that's really all I have for our presentation this morning. So I am open for questions.
Any questions? You're good, Scott.
No, no, no.
Hold on, hold on.
I have a few. I just wanted to see if somebody else wanted to jump in first.
Go ahead.
So Scott and I had the opportunity to sit down and meet. And I think, thank you for that because you answered most of my questions. But there are a couple of items that I think I just wanted to share with the boards and things that we talked about, our observations that I had had with the budget. And one of those is being, one of those being the school operating budgets. And I can certainly appreciate and applaud the district's efforts to increase the amount per student that we give back. Thank you for your research and going back and noticing that, you know, back in 2008, when that had dropped down, we never really fully restored that. And so I thank you for getting closer to that. One thing that I was observant of is that, I guess for the simplicity of the school operating budgets, so many of the categoricals are now rolled into one lump sum. And this is one that, I guess I'm just interested in how we communicate this to the schools. Going back, I guess a few years ago, when the board had added the STEAM or robotics funding to each school, this was spelled out as, you know, here's $1,000 specifically earmarked for that purpose. Because we, I think our observation at the time was that so many schools were not releasing the funds all the way down to the classroom level, and all these people were writing the very same grant to the Ed Foundation. We're like, okay, if everybody's writing the same thing, at what point do we just fund this? And so now, if it's rolled in grouped with the rest of the school operating budget, what's in place to ensure that those funds still make it down to the classroom? That now the principal doesn't say, oh, I've got discretion and I can spend that $1,000 on something else? It's not STEAM or robotics or...
And we will communicate that concern to your principals. I think you got a good point, and I understand that. If we do see that as an issue at the end of the year, then we'll go back to what we were doing in the past. What we were seeing were some schools were not spending it at all because it was just $1,000. And so we just wanted to pull it together where they would have it all in one pot. But yeah, I agree with you. If they're not going to spend it, and that's the board's intention, then we definitely will separate it back out in the upcoming year.
And I think you had a good observation, too, is that sometimes when you've got too many categoricals, bookkeepers might just immediately charge off to the main account and not recognize, hey, you've got all this printing money sitting there. But then they've charged it all to their primary account instead of breaking it off into that designated printing amount.
That is true. That has happened.
So perhaps from a simplicity standpoint, that might be more advantageous just as long as folks know that this money is still there. The board has still budgeted for every school to get $1,000 for this. It's just grouped in this other lump sum now, as well as printing and a few of the others. So I guess with that, I've got kind of a question now, just to kind of, as I'm thinking through this. So I took the liberty of looking at a number of schools' supply lists that they had posted on their websites this year. And there are still a couple of schools asking for a school fee or a school due. I'm not sure that we can charge kids dues to go to school. And so coupled with the increase in school operating budgets, I guess I'm still wrapping my head around, why is this needed? I guess what they're paying for out of that is school IDs largely. But if that's a safety and security component, is there not a funding source for us to fund students' IDs as opposed to the school doing that? Or could there be some sort of encouragement saying, hey, we gave you an extra $10. Why are you still collecting money from kids to pay for this? You should be able to pay for it. Now, I guess I'm not sure where I...
Can I ask a question about that? Is it a mandatory school due? Or is it like, at Treadway, my kid's school, it was, you can buy this list of supplies or just give me $15 and I'll buy the supplies myself? And it was a choice. Is yours like just mandatory dues, what you're talking about?
Well, I think they've changed the wording a bit so it doesn't seem as mandatory. You know, because a couple of years ago, we had schools that were putting you on the fines list if you did not pay. But where it breaks down, the schools that had done that says that it covers their ID, their lanyard, sometimes a water bottle, and their planner or agenda.
So mandatory. That is mandatory.
So I guess if the student didn't pay it, then the school... But then, so then you've got some who have paid it, some who have not. So, you know, I guess I look back to, okay, if you got an extra $10 per kid, why are you still charging, why are you still asking the kids to pay that? Why are you asking kids to buy their own? I mean, I get maybe if you've lost it and now you need a replacement, okay. Then there's perhaps a replacement cost. But if we're requiring students from a safety and security standpoint to wear an ID, why are we asking you to pay for your ID? We don't do that for our employees, right? When you get your employee ID, we don't take $3 out of your paycheck for the employee's ID. So why are we doing that for kids? I don't know.
Did it designate that that was what the funds were for? Because I'm kind of like Dr. Burns. When we were zoned for Eustis Elementary School, my kids went there, and it was $20 for school supplies. I'm going to tell you, that is about a fifth of what I think I pay now because the school that they go to currently doesn't do that. The school's, times three, doesn't do that. And so I would prefer to give you $20 and let you go buy all the supplies than for me to go rush the store.
No, no. This was in addition to, here's the list of all the notebooks and pencils and pens and calculators and things like that you'll need and folders. We'd also like you to pay $10, which covers the cost of your ID, your lanyard. I mean, a couple of years ago, we had lanyards that were donated, and schools were still charging for lanyards.
Yes.
You know, so...
I hear you. Okay, I hear you. I just wanted to clarify. I'm like, oh, my gosh. I would love to go back to that.
Yeah, I'm like, please allow the voluntary money.
My kids, I have no problem paying $10 if it covered all their school supplies.
For school supplies, right? It was 20 at the time, but 20 is still, like I said, about a fifth of the money.
That'd be a blessing.
Yes.
But I guess I'm just stuck on, okay, if this is, if they're IDs, I mean, is there not a source of funding to pay for a student's ID if that's what we're requiring from a safety, security standpoint?
Let me be really clear how I feel about this. If it's required, safety and security, we should not be charging kids.
I agree.
End of the story.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I don't, okay. Can I just ask that? Is it required for them to wear their ID on a lanyard?
Those are required. And most of them have, do they use them even in lunch? Aren't they still using their IDs to scan for lunch?
I'm not sure.
Was it free and for everybody? Do they still scan? They still have to have accounts?
The lanyards we got from Speak Out.
I remember.
Mr. Joe Zeiler.
I've never seen my, I'm going to speak to my three children. I have never seen any one of them walk out the door with their lanyard on. I'm just telling you. Because you remember, we were talking about the lanyards and anyway. And that may just be the enforcement thing. And that goes, I mean, there's so many things. This is like a very weighted question. But they have never walked out with it around their neck. They have it on their backpack or they have it on their person, I think, typically, but never around their neck.
Yeah, well, I think that's fine.
Yeah. But then do you need a lanyard expense? I guess I'm thinking about this budget item that's going to come out of nowhere. Do we need to buy lanyards? Is it okay if it's on their backpack? That's not on their person? I don't know what safety is there.
Or the other part of that is we just say, hey, schools, we gave you 10 extra dollars. Can you absorb this cost and stop charging kids?
But are we, I want to address, already did address how I feel about safety and security. But then how far in the weeds do we get with the administrators and their discretionary fund? I think we're, maybe we're crossing. I think the safety, security is legit. I think telling them, and if there's other concerns, just like that. But if it's how they spend their other discretionary dollars, are we micromanaging? Because that's the reason they get it, is that we're allowing those SAC committees. And if we don't trust them to come up with a budget, should we be giving the $10 extra?
SAC committee doesn't touch this budget.
They approve, they approve their school budget.
No, no, they don't. They get informed of this.
They approve their SAC budget, which is like $6,000.
No, no.
Oh, sorry. I thought they approved their whole budget.
This is completely up to the principal.
Okay, well, they ought to be approving the whole budget. Okay, that's another problem. So my concern has always been that we have amazing administrators, and you can't be a master of all things. And so are they masters at their ability to budget and manage their business side? Or is there strength academics and leadership on that side, which is where I think it should be? So I thought, being fair, I've always thought from day one that the SAC committee was actually bringing that expertise in. So if we aren't, then maybe I'm concerned about giving them any additional money because I'm not convinced in my entire 10 years that they're the best at managing their school budgets. That's all.
Yeah, so this is part of the challenge where teachers have approached me and said, hey, I need $250 for new PE equipment. And then they go to the principal, and the principal says, we don't have the funding for that. Do a walkathon or something. And then the teacher comes back to me, and I say, what did they say? They said do a walkathon. I said, okay, go back and ask them what their plans are for the $26,000 they're rolling over. And they're like, well, I'm not going to do that. You know, so I think there's, you know, at some schools, maybe they're really good at funding their curricular programs out of this. And others, they've got maybe larger, school-wide sort of initiatives that they're using that money for, and it's not making its way specifically down to the classroom, which is why we had done the categorical on the STEAM or robotics to ensure that that got there. But I don't know how you solve that without micromanaging, right? We don't want to do that.
At one time, we spoke about you sitting down with these administrators. Have you done that?
No, sir. I never got a chance to. It was, we'd talked about doing that last fall, and then COVID shut everything down, and it just hadn't got to it yet.
Did you ever, did you ever sit with the bookkeepers? Because maybe they're the more, no, I don't know.
Bookkeepers are bookkeepers. I mean, you really...
I don't know.
So we have training with bookkeepers. And we, in fact, we just completed a training with the bookkeeper, I believe, last week. So we do, we do a lot of training with the bookkeepers. We generally don't see a lot of issues with principals. They know that the money is small, so they're really tight with it. So we don't see like a lot of misspending or overspending. Usually, if they want to do something that's extra, they go fundraise for that. They either have a community partner come in or something like that, and they ask them for something, and they go out and buy those things. But with the general operating, it's pretty much just supplies and materials to operate the school. There's not a lot of...
What's the aggregate dollar? Isn't it $3.5 million or something that's divvied out between all the schools?
It's, that's, off the top of my head, I hate to say it, but it's probably close. I'd have to go...
I mean, so that's not chicken feed? And it's based on the FTE?
It's based on the FTE.
And there are specific things that they pay for out of that, like substitute teachers, right?
Well, they buy all their custodial supplies. They buy all their paper supplies. They buy a lot out of that. They're substitutes. So there's a lot there. It's...
But it adds, in the past, again, kuna matata. So I don't want to go back. But we've had principals that wanted to save those dollars in reserves so they would put the burden of substituting on teachers during their breaks or whatever. I mean, we've heard those kind of things. So do we really, it goes back to, are they masters of both? Are they able to really come up and budget these dollars that are given to them? That particularly at the high school level are not chicken feed?
No.
And so...
I, my experience here, they're doing a good job. We don't have overspending going on. They do a good job at staying within their budget. Usually where we run into problems is some athletics or some other, and then they were supposed to fundraise and they didn't fundraise. But that's very rare here. But I think most of your administrators do a decent job at running their budgets in their schools.
Can I ask about the ELC, the indirect cost? Is it going to go back to schools again this year? Or did you guys make a change of what you're going to do with that? Because that $10 per student might wash out.
So what we're weighing on the ELC program is the lost revenue that they had. Once we restore their lost revenue with our S or 2, S or 3 funding, then they'll have the ability to make those. But at this point in time, because the revenue was down last year, they don't have the ability to make them.
So they won't be dispensing some of that additional ELC money to schools?
Well, once we restore it with S or 2, S or 3...
So the plan is to continue to give them that supplement?
Yes.
And to the robotics dollars that are specific, and this board has been really focused on our STEAM programs, why would we now just put it in the school budget when we've been allocated?
Just, we roll certain things in there that, like the printing and things like that because they've just gotten so disaggregated. And then you have lots of money left over. And a lot of those don't roll over. So if they don't spend all their money, it doesn't roll over. But when we put it into the general operating, it will roll over for six months. So it just simplified it a little bit more so where they could have access to it without having to have a piece here, a piece there.
Do we have, I think we do. Do we have any guidance under the light item, line item? When they go in and look, does it say like, $1,000 suggested for this or...
No, but we can, we definitely can do that. We can communicate to them. The board's, you know, the board expects them to spend $1,000 at least on STEM. That's not, I don't think that's an issue. But we can split it back out. I mean, I know it was an issue that the board liked, but I didn't know it would be...
But my only concern is what I just said to you, that my life experience is they're great administrators, not the best at running a business. And that's what, and that's what we have, is 43 little businesses.
Yeah.
And we, over time, had opportunities where one spends money well, one doesn't spend money well, that, you know what I'm saying? And that when you have a capital project, they should be able to roll it over so they're banking money. And has that been always clearly represented? I will tell you the answer is no, in my opinion. And so I'm not sure. Actually, I'm not even sure why the school has to buy their own janitorial supplies, by the way.
I wanted, I was wondering the same thing.
Like, why would they, why would they have to do that?
They've always done that. That's just.
I know.
But it's a direct transfer from us.
Yeah, yeah.
We're giving them the money to buy them from us, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I know, I understand cost center transfers, but I'm not exactly sure why we would cost center transfer for toilet paper.
It's just a practice that's always been.
You did it all day on this, right?
Yeah.
They requisition. They're not paying for it anyway. If we're giving them the money and then they're giving the money back to us and we're giving them product, why not just requisition it and not give them the money?
They're accountable for the amount of money you give.
So it's X number of dollars per student and, and so that, you know, I guess you don't ensure, or you ensure that this one school doesn't just stockpile a whole warehouse full of toilet paper. You know, and anytime they ask for toilet paper, if we're paying for it, of course, we're gonna give it to them. But if they're, you know, I guess it avoids the stockpile thing, right?
Again, if we were the central and we have 43 businesses and we know empirically and by FTE what they're allowed. We would be able to keep track and send it to them without this transfer of money back and forth that doesn't really exist, right? You're taking from one pocket to the other pocket.
But the reason why it's a money issue and not just a requisition issue is, is you can handle it through the budget process with the money issue. If you just allocated supplies to them, then it wouldn't be in their budget. It wouldn't be, um, you wouldn't be able to manage it and control it like Tom suggested, um, by school. So you wouldn't be able to allocate it and show in their budget.
So that school administrator has a budget on how much toilet paper, paper towels and chemicals?
It's part of, part of their operating budget, yeah.
So when we hear complaints, it, it, we should actually complain to the principals about the lack of toilet paper, paper towels or whatever.
I've never had that, by the way, I've never heard that complaint, just so you know.
I've heard soap in the bathroom.
I've heard about paper, but not. Occasionally I get that.
I wanna make a complaint that it's not existing.
I haven't heard that one in quite a long time, but I have heard it.
It's soap. That's the one that, that you'd hear, right? Soap in the bathrooms, you get it too? Oh.
I haven't. And I could see it.
You Matilla's like a magical.
Paper. I get paper, paper complaints. That's a different thing. I wonder, listen, I get paper.
Which, which we pulled that, didn't we pull that back and the district is providing copy paper? It was the schools were given, part of their school budget was to buy copying paper.
It still is. They, they, but they're, they had a, they had a separate printing budget.
No, we just told them not to limit it. They were limiting how much teachers could receive and we said, just give them whatever they need. They ask for copy paper, give them paper. They need more, ask us, we'll give you more.
Okay, so then how many went over on their budget?
We didn't have any.
Cause I would've put 15 cent on copy paper, throw it all the other way.
You know, nobody wanted to call and say, we need more paper. I'm just gonna say that. That was not a phone call somebody wanted to make. As I'm listening, oh, go ahead.
Oh, uh, no, go ahead.
I was just thinking in regards to some of the other, like, it's hard to sit here and think, like, we talked about fundraising. And we know that schools need playground equipment and we know that they need PE. We know that there are some big ticket items that come up at elementary, middle and high school. And they get stuck in that situation of, okay, now I need to make this $50,000 purchase and my school budget isn't gonna handle that. I was thinking of our capital plan and I'm, even, even thinking of like our high schools and our athletic fields or our scoreboards or our announcement PA systems on this, whatever. Like, we have a lot of costs associated with those that we don't have any allocations for. And I wonder if it wouldn't be beneficial for each school to come up with like a five-year plan. So here's your, what your amount of money is that you're getting per student for your school operating budget. Here's your, here's the stuff we know you're, that's coming out. Here's your paper. Here's your janitorial supplies. Here's your substitutes. Here's those. This should be excess. This is the, all the things you're saying you need. Like, can we help them save? Can we help them have a plan? Can we help them, how, how old is your playground equipment? When do you anticipate you're gonna have to replace that? How old is your PE equipment? How old are your computers that we, that the school provides versus the district providing? But any expense that's gonna come out of the school, it might be helpful for our admin to have that kind of five-year outlook planning.
And that's exactly what I'm speaking about.
Right.
Because they're administrators, not business people. And business people would have a five-year plan.
Right.
And yet we're just throwing this cash out and then next thing you know, they need playground equipment where they should've been budgeting. We had an incident where a school was, they had to replace their computers in eight years or something when I came on the board. And yet they should've been allocating dollars from their.
Right.
From their school plan.
Right.
So the district got muddled his face when it really should've been part of that plan. And that's when the privacy superintendent told me, well, these aren't business people. They're administrators. They're academics. So we need, and yet we're giving them this cash and saying, do with it as you will. I just think.
And some of, like, some, some of them I feel like have done, like Treadway has that STEM lab that's amazing. But they had to, you know, beg, borrow, steal and save for that. So that would be a part of the dollars that I have excess. Now, I am saving this. So to, to Mr. Dodd's point, we'll ask him what they're doing this with this extra $29,000. They could say, I'm saving this for a STEAM lab. Let's talk about what we need from it. But I'm thinking the STEAM labs that they have, I'm thinking of, um, even Tole Middle School has really invested some dollars into their program. This is like an acceleration program, but they can have unique goals and a way to save for those things versus. It's always this like, oh gosh, we need it tomorrow. And we also know in today's construction and any kind of building, supplies are six to eight months out in advance anyway. So it might be helpful for them to be planning now so they can start ordering those things that we know they're gonna need next year. That we couldn't get for them tomorrow if they needed it tomorrow.
And for me, and I would just wanna give kudos also, I mean, we're at 93% graduation rate, which is what Bill John is.
Yes.
And so I'd much rather find an alternate way of dealing with this budget than putting it on our administrators. But we are throwing this cash out and saying, do it as you will, without almost any direction, it sounds like, right? Or any continuity.
So you'll see in a few minutes, um, some of this thinking when Ms. Randall presents. They have looked at playgrounds and some of that. So you're gonna see some of that in the capital plan and some of the, the five-year planning process of that. So, um, so stay tuned on that one in just a second. The thing that, that I'm thinking of when you were talking about this $10, what you're referring to about the computers and some of the oversight that occurred through SAC committees. If you remember, the state used to give schools $10 per student at four SACs. And they took that money and that was the money that they used. They put, they had an approved budget through the SAC committee. Um, they had that pot of money. It was very, um, there's a lot of oversight and input from the SAC committees of that pot of money. And then if you remember, the state took it down to $5 per student and then they got rid of it altogether. So now with the reinstatement of that, maybe that is a way to, to kind of come back and maybe set aside some funding for purposes of SAC committees to be able to do some planning around those dollars, to be able to put together kind of a five-year plan, three-year plan, um, as to how they wanna use that monies. But if we keep taking away the dues and fees that schools are able to use for their discretionary funding, it's gonna make it really hard. Because we've already taken away some of their ability to do that with some of the, the board's, um, previous decisions. So they're using that, that $10 that they're asking for lanyards or IDs or for whatever purposes. A lot of them for the discretionary dollars because they don't wanna continue to fundraise. I think that that's been, I know as a principal, that was one of the worst things that we did to, to parents and to kids was to send them out to knocking on doors and trying to raise money. Um, and so we've tried to stop that, but if we keep limiting their ability to be able to bring in discretionary funding, we're gonna force them back into those fundraiser modes or they're not gonna be able to do those teacher appreciation things. And all the things that they don't have monies to do that were prohibited for fighting monies for, that's their ability to do that. And so I, I, I would just ask you to, to, to think about when we're asking, um, you know, we're taking away dues and fees, that, that's one of the ways that they do that.
But I, but I don't know that the board took that away. We just said, what does the law say? Now let's follow the law. And I think for so many years, they'd gotten away from that and were charging students and then marking up supplies significantly. So like, if I bought a PE uniform, which I was required to have, I could now use that extra money from the PE uniform to pay for bleachers. And, and, but it's a forced, you know, they get a free education by, by constitution. So I, I, I don't know that the board really took that away. But yes, it was a surprise to folks who had just added all these fees on over the years.
Well, I know one thing. If it comes to safety and security, then we're not gonna charge the kids to have their IDs.
So, so I guess that goes back to my, so that was your original question. I was just trying to pose, is there a funding source for these IDs? So we don't have to charge the kids for their, for their ID? If we're gonna tell the kids they gotta wear the ID from a safety and security standpoint, we wanna know who's a student there and who's not, then.
Yeah, their school budget.
Mr. Chairman, um, one of the things that I would say, I wanna put this out, there's a disclaimer first. I, as a principal, never did fundraise, so it's not for the school, because I have a detest for them. However, um, you have to understand that it is very difficult to, um, manage that many little people. And I absolutely agree with you. If we say to them, you have to have an ID badge. It should not solely be the responsibility of the student to go out and purchase a new one. There are, there are other ways of doing that. However, you have to also teach responsibility. And it is not uncommon to have a student who loses their badge four or five times during the year. Well, that becomes a problem, not necessarily of the student losing, but just being careless and not having, in my opinion, responsible things in their mind. As far as, um, fees, I think you're gonna find that not everyone charges fees. So I would hate to see us punish all school administrators for perhaps things that a few are doing. So I think before we consider just taking things away, uh, we need to figure out how many people are actually having a problem. I think that's the first problem. Uh, because there are some administrators I know that do not do those things. So it would be a shame to punish ev- everyone. Um, as far as.
Can you, how may, how may I understand that, what you're talking about when you're saying punish people? What is, what is that?
As a school administrator, you have a, and, and while it may appear to be big, when you look at it, it's not. Because you have all kinds of things that people never think of that you're responsible for and you need to make sure that the students have and the teachers have. And if you don't have some discretion in where you get the funding for that, then it becomes impossible for you to prop. It's just like taking care of your family. It becomes a hardship to provide all the things that your family needs. Copy paper. Um, I know we have some people in the room that have suffered through copy paper, cause they suffered through it with me. I don't think principals said to teachers, you can only have 150 copies, cause they didn't understand the importance of copy paper. They simply didn't have it. And it seems like such a simple thing, but when you multiply that times 80, that becomes a lot. And you've got to have some discretionary means to pay for that stuff. And I, I will tell you, one of the biggest complaints that I heard when I was a principal is when things kept being taken away. Because once you take things away or you put so many limitations on it, that there's no discretion on the part of the administrator, then you lock them in. To give you a perfect example, uh, once upon a time, and by the way, 15 years ago, we did have five-year plans. And they were on record. And we talked about things like playground equipment and where that money was gonna come from. But 15 years ago, some of us, not me personally, but some, some principals had CDs. They had savings accounts. They had all kinds of things and ways to try and come up with that money. But I'm a firm believer that the money that is given to a school in a school year, the intended purpose of that money is for it to be spent on the students and to provide their needs for that year. So I feel we have to be very careful when we force them into positions where they're trying to stockpile money to buy large-ticket items. Because trust me, if they do that consistently, they're probably not gonna provide some of those basic, everyday things that children need. For example, um, you know, many years ago, principals went out and they tried to bargain with people. They bought toilet paper from different people because it was cheaper. At least we've taken care of those things now. We provide a central location where everybody's paying the same price. Wax is a prime example. It's.
Wax?
Wax for the floors.
You know, you put on the floor.
Floors, cafeteria.
You would, you would not believe the money they spend on wax. Because, you know, if you're a principal who wants your school to be clean, you want it to shine, you want, when the board members come, not to be talking about those dirty dingy spots in the corner, you spend a lot of money on wax. If you need a new stripper, you gotta find the money to buy that. And the district office is not necessarily going to know that they need a new stripper at Ryan's Early Learning. Principal may not know until it falls apart, because, you know, head custodian may not tell them.
And what do you do? Let me ask you this. In the case that a student can't pay, so let's say I come to you or I just don't pay. I don't send my kids to school with the money. Would you reach out? Is it just, if you can't do it, you can't do it?
Personally, I never allowed a student to need anything that they didn't have. I simply said, you know, give it to them. Now, if they came to me and said, you know, we've given this kid six badges, then I might call the parents, say, hey, are you aware your child was at six badges? But I would never turn away a student who needed something because they didn't have money.
That's where I think I, I sit, like, I hear what you're saying, but I think I could do it. I'd give you $10 to spend on whatever you needed. But if the person next to me couldn't, as long as we're not penalizing those children or lowering their grades, like we've talked about, or not letting them go on field trips or. And then I, I'm okay with it too.
What would be wrong, cause I didn't realize until today that the SAC committee didn't have diminished in their role in the budgets. I really didn't. What would be wrong with those SAC committees being more engaged? It's not taking any power away. It's giving support, in my opinion. So I bet you, and every school has a CPA, for example, or business people, for example, that then if they had a purpose, they had, they help, help the administrator. This is not a takeaway. This is, let's get engaged people that can really support the school and give, give the board some reassurance that they're, they're getting the help they need to really budget. Cause I want them focused on educating our kids. That's what I really want them to do. I don't know.
Well, I have, I, I think, I mean, isn't there some sort of statutory responsibility that they have the discretion over a school operating budget? Or be able to turn on a dime, like, you can't wait for a SAC.
That is in the, that is in the, um, description.
Like, you, you can't, you can't wait for, you know, a month for the SAC to meet to, to go out and buy some PE balls.
No, no, no. When you set your budget at the beginning of the year, then you know that you're gonna be drawing from that. They wouldn't, not, they're not gonna be involved, just like we're having way more conversation than I expected about this.
Me too.
That, that, they're not gonna be in the minutia of the day-to-day, but they would sit down and help do exactly what Molly's saying, is outline what those, those expenses are gonna look like. And then when you begin to fall out of budget, just like with you, Scott, when you come for, to us, you're showing us where you've saved and you haven't saved. And then you can pivot it and you, you don't have to have a budget meeting every month.
Now, most principals, each month, or I always did, I go over my budget, all the budgets within the school. I would go over those with the SAC committee. So they always knew what my discretionary budget looked like. They knew what my internal budget looked like. They, they even knew what my Title I budget looked like. The only problem that I see with that is, in my case, and again, you know, you know, the schools I was in. I didn't always have a good representation at the SAC meeting. I normally had two or three faithful people that I could depend on. And some of those people were staff members. So that was the problem I ran into, uh, with giving the SAC, you know, that kind of need. And, and a lot of times, like you said, every school has a CPA. Yeah, I would reach out to people in the community if they had certain, um, skills and say, would you be on my SAC committee? And they would agree, but I may never see them the entire school year. They didn't necessarily, you know, be at their schedule or whatever. They didn't necessarily come to the meetings. So that, I think, would be the problem. Some schools is easier to get a working SAC. But then some schools, it's gonna be very difficult to do that.
I, I guess I was just kinda going back to, is there a funding source that could cover? It's 290. I, I, you know, and I.
I think we covered the badge. This is like, we opened it a little bigger.
So the one piece, the one piece I, I think we should keep in mind as we talk about fees and things of the sort is that, yes, while $10 might not sound like a lot to us, to any of us sitting at this table, we have to remember that our district has so many students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, that that threshold is so high that the entire district gets it. That's the demographic of Lake County. And so when we're asking people to pay $10, it doesn't sound like a lot, but that $10 adds up and adds up and adds up and adds up. And somebody will just pay it, but really, should they be bank, should they be having to pay for their student ID?
$10 for the badge? We already said they're not gonna do that.
Right, right, right. So.
We just said, that was done.
But we keep circling around fees and, and, you know, that, keeping, ensuring that, that schools have, but we already have a policy about fees and dues and things of that sort. But anyway, the, the other piece I wanted to ask about on the, on the school operating budget is, uh, Lake Point Academy is a unique position in their K8. We give middle schools $1,500 for band. They don't have anything allocated for band. I know they don't have a full load of it. It's one period. So I guess, should they get $300 for the, the one period? If $1,500 were, is, is for five periods?
And, and Mr. Dodd, just for, to correct, yes, in, in our sheet, we show zero, but we had already allocated 750.
Okay.
So, um, that's half as the normal amount, but remember their elementary and, um, middle school. And when you look at their middle school, the number of students is, is less than half of what most middle schools are, so.
For, for their, it, it, but I, I, I didn't see anything in their band column. So where, where is that?
We, it just hasn't, the, the spreadsheet hasn't been updated.
Oh, okay.
But it, it is in their budget. It's just not on that.
Okay. Oh, that's good.
Sorry about that.
No, no, that's all right. I'm glad that was included now. And, um, I, I think the other piece that would kinda help frame some of this is, is the historical perspective. I don't know if you've had a chance to compile the last couple of years of spending on, on any of this.
The actual spending or what the allocation?
I guess spending against the allocation. You know, like, the schools spend their allocation, you know, last year. I, I guess it's hard to kinda go in circles saying, oh, advocate for more money, but if they're not spending what they've got, you know, it, you know, that's, that's an argument that's tough.
We, um, we definitely can provide to you guys the, uh, the, the operating rollover like we did last year. That's something we can definitely do. And, um, that kinda gives you, but, but again, that, that may be, that may be their way of saving up.
Right.
For next year. Um, you know, a lot of expenditures do occur before school starts. So, um, that's when they order a lot of supplies for the whole entire year. And, um, so they, they do spend a lot of that very quickly, July, August, September. And then, um, and, and back to your comment of Chairman Mathias earlier. The only project that I'm aware of is, uh, Wendy Hill Middle's, uh, floor in their gym. We were rolling their funds over, their operating funds every year. They would send in a request and we would, we would grant that request for them.
And I see nothing wrong with that.
Yeah. And, and I, I think it was, and, and they also were fundraising, uh, externally to, to come up with it. And then when we got close, um, we just, we kicked in the rest of the money from our capital allocation program to make sure the floor got done. John Carr's department did that and it turned out really well for the school. So we, we do work with them. And they, they were in a long-term planning of that too. It was, so it was a good project.
But to Mrs. Cunningham's comment, that's where, again, I think if there was some additional support for the administrator to ensure that kids aren't doing without for the benefit of this banking. Cause I thought the banking was a good idea, but maybe now it's Mrs. Cunningham where maybe then it's taking away something that kids need. I don't know.
I don't think it's a bad idea. I just think we have to be cognizant that all schools are not created equal. And, you know, some schools would have more of the bank than others. Some schools would need more help. You know, 20 years ago, if I needed a new. Um, you know, twenty years ago, if I needed a new lawnmower at Eustace Heights, I was only required to come up with half of the cost. And then the maintenance department would match what I could spend. So if I knew that I needed a new lawnmower, and back then, you know, seventy-five hundred dollars, so I would save half, you know, by begging, taking from Paul to pay Peter. And then the maintenance department would give me the other half and, you know, we'd get a new lawnmower.
And, and again, I think there is, that is a perfect model, by the way. The school has skin in the game. The district is supporting it. All is right with the world. As long as it's transparent and that we know that. And I just, I just find it hard, hard to believe that every administrator is the same as in Mrs. Cunningham when she was in her school. And that do some need support. I'm certain of that. And I'm just saying, just because of the numbers. And do we have others that are stellar? I would say one to probably one hundred percent, right? So, and this is no critique of administrators, but not like the others again. But it is just, it's just basic that you can't do everything well. That's all.
True.
And so if the SAC committees, it sounds like to me that, that, um, and I also appreciate the comments on SAC committees, because other schools have had, in my district, who had the same issue. But maybe it's because they didn't have a real purpose and real, um, the discipline in a meeting versus actually being engaged and changing, changing or affecting the budget of the school would encourage me. I was just gonna go to a meeting. I wouldn't go either. I'm just saying. But if I now am really engaged and I really feel like I'm part of its success, that's a different story.
I, I got another question.
You got another question?
I do, I do. This is completely unrelated to school operating budgets, budgets. So it'd be a nice gift in years. So I know one thing that's been on our radar for many years, the food service fund balance. How, how does that look?
So our, our food service fund balance, uh, towards the end of the year was still a little over nine million dollars.
I'm with you on that.
And what, what does that mean for, like, percentage-wise?
Oh, off the top of my head.
Is that, is that really high still?
I think the highest.
Should we be serving higher quality food?
I think the highest it got was, uh, close to fifteen million right before, fourteen point something million right before COVID hit. Um, so they did see a reduction this current year or this last year. Um, obviously their revenues were down, expenditures were up. And, um, but, but they're still healthy. They're still above, I believe, the, the, the limit for the USDA.
Superintendent, superintendent has a comment about it.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, hearing, hearing the re- reoccurring theme about food quality. I know, you know, we changed vendors two years ago in, in hopes to improve the quality of food. When the, um, they came in and reduced the sodium and reduced the sugars, of course, the food quality, food taste for kids went down again. Um, certainly something that we have to comply with, otherwise we lose our federal reimbursement. But, um, I started reaching out, looking maybe for some options. So today we have a meeting with food service. We're gonna look at, um, kind of, some of, maybe some out-of-the-box thinking about how do we improve the quality of food. Um, I'm working with Kroger, because they're new to the community, as a way to maybe help to provide some, um, additional food options for kids that might be of quality. I liked the idea that someone shared about actually having some taste tests around pizzas and other things that we might be able to purchase from outside vendors and that still comply with the, um, USDA rules in terms of sodium and sugars. But actually their kids have an opportunity to maybe pick and choose from some other items that we might be able to bring in to the, to the schools using some of this additional funding. So, um, I think if we can, certainly Kroger was very interested. They've never engaged with the school district before. So it was kind of a, an exciting opportunity to, to go local as they're now new to the community. And so, um, I'm sending them some more information. And, um, we're continuing that conversation. So I'm, I'm hoping that maybe something will come of that, but we, we're gonna look at some different options.
Well, I, I certainly applaud that. You know, I, I guess I, five kids, I've got, I've got quite a, a range of experience levels with food lunch, uh, uh, with school lunch. And, and you know, when you are giving it away and kids still will go through the line and not take anything and say, no, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go sit down today. I'm not gonna get a school lunch and eat nothing. Or when they continue to bring their food from home, you, you, you have some sort of problem you gotta fix. And it's, oh.
This is from the beginning to time.
Let me know when we get this worked out, because I still pack lunches every day.
Except back when I used to actually cook.
That's right. But the, the other piece of that, that maybe is also worth looking in addition to the, the food itself, is the, maybe the storage methods. Uh, you know, so, so, um, I, I asked, I was like, asked the kids about, uh, school lunches and they said, you know, the, so the burger tastes fine, except it's sitting in water, you know? So then it's, it sounds gross. I was like, is it sitting in water or is it just covered so the steam is collecting and what's going on? You know, so, you know, maybe the food wasn't bad, but because it's sitting there in water, now it becomes unappealing, you know? So, so I don't know.
That is actually how you hold a burger. Is it hot water?
Well.
If you go to make that, if you go to Burger King or McDonald's.
With the bun?
I, I don't know.
No, it's just the.
Oh, just the patty. Yeah, okay. That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That is best practices, actually.
Well, anyway, they, they say it's gross, so.
I don't know if you, but the customer ever sees it.
That's exactly the difference, right? That's the difference.
Well, our customers are seeing it apparently. I don't know. I don't know if they just like pull it out of a bucket or, I don't, I have no idea. But, um, anyway, it'd be worth looking at. So I appreciate, appreciate that. And, um, and I love the idea of maybe getting some, some kids involved in some of that taste testing and, you know, get some opinions. And we've got some strong ones. Um, and then the other, the other piece, I, I, more of an observation, but, uh, may, maybe, I don't know, there's a question in this one. Um, so I can really appreciate the, the note on transportation line twenty-six. It talked about the significant part savings because of consistently purchasing new buses. Applaud, applaud, applaud to that one. That, you know, um, for so many years, we weren't catching up, that we weren't buying the new buses and, um, we were paying for it in the, in the operating budget because of maintenance and repairs. Um, just in, in our conversation about that, um, we had a great observation about, yeah, maybe saving money on the capital, but it's costing in the general fund. Um, as we go forth in the capital, I, I just, I'm excited about maybe expanding that line of thinking aside from just the buses, about what else, uh, chillers or you name it, could, could fall into this category, we could save on the general operating dollars and get more of those dollars into the classroom at the, at the capital expense instead of the general fund.
I have a comment. If you're done, are you done?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. I just wanted to tell you, like, I kind of combed through this budget. I think I've been home for four days, like, in the last three and a half weeks. And so Mr. Ward and I have talked at airports at six-thirty in the evening. We have texted each other and he was, like, routinely available to me, not here, coming to him in his office. And so I wanted to say thank you for that. I also wanna tell you, like, as much as I looked and we talked about, like, what's the best way to look for this? And when I did ask, like, when I called him with my questions about, like, this, there's miscellaneous and there's this and this, he said, listen, go to this page and look at what the departments are requesting, and that'll give you the minutia where you're not seeing it. I mean, just very, very hands-on in regard, in regards to working through the budget. And the only thing I came up with through this whole document that I questioned was there was a couple of different cell phone costs that were inconsistent. Like, the auditor had a seven hundred dollar, the regional director had an eight hundred dollar, there was another one that had six hundred dollars. So I was just thinking, if they're all unlimited plans, would they all not be one flat rate? And that, I'm telling you, like, I, I searched through that transparency webpage by line items. I searched by department. I searched by all sorts of things. I would text him the question and he would respond or call. And so I just, I think, I mean, I looked last year, I remember the computer. There were some people that just had, just continuing, like, rotating every year, they were gonna spend five thousand dollars on computer equipment. There were tubes and tires. There was, like, like, just strange things. Those, I looked for those things and they were gone. So I feel like you guys did an excellent job of even cleaning up some of the things and this transparency webpage made it so easy to look for. Specific items, department items, department request items. And so I don't know what the rest of the board's experience was, but I appreciate you working with me.
I had the very same experience.
Yeah.
So I, I, I think this has been one of the most refreshing budget years. I mean, in case in point, okay, so you look at last year, eight-point-eight-eight fund balance. And now we've got raises off the top that we know they're in there and that brings the fund balance back down that here we're, we're increasing the number of dollars we're sending directly to schools.
Yes.
Um, so, I, I mean, I think that was, I think there was a lot that was pretty refreshing here. I, I had the same cell phone observation. I was like, well, do I, do I pick on that one?
I know, I wasn't going to, but that.
It was a low dollar?
My point was, it's the only thing I found that was like, what is, this doesn't really, but that was it. Like, I'm like, well, this is nice. And I kept looking, like, I kept looking and kept, and I'd search for something else. I thought, okay, I'm giving up.
Mine was, mine was office chairs, which again is not a high dollar amount when you, when you're looking at seven hundred million dollars. But then I was like, I don't know, this person's got five hundred dollars for an office chair. This one, this person got two hundred. It depends on how long they're in their office.
How many people they're buying office chairs for.
Yeah, how many people, you know, maybe that's it. I don't know. But, you know, certainly if a, a teacher would ask for a five hundred dollar office chair, they'd be told no. You know, so, so I, I don't know if that's per chair or a total for the department, but.
Right, right.
But yeah, I mean, aside from getting into just, I mean, when we're talking units of hundreds of dollars.
Really fine minutia. Yes, yes.
So, I mean, there's, there's a lot to be said. That's great in this budget. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, um, you and I had discussed how we haven't yet done, um, the installation of electric meters into the cafeterias. Um, I was wondering if we could, do we need to actually add that item into the budget, the, the meters to check for?
Um, it would be out of the capital budget. So I think probably if you want to do something like that, have that conversation when, when Kelly's up here talking about the five-year plan.
Because my concept or my idea was, um, well, we haven't moved on it, so I'd like to move on it. But also, um.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Yeah, could you?
Oh, okay. Uh, gosh, we had an audit a couple of years ago and, um, one of the things that came up was that we, we pay square footage for, uh, electricity. Uh, it's sort of, how, how do, how would?
The food, the food service has to reimburse us a certain percentage because of the different funding. And it was on an average, right?
Right, it was on an average based on like the square footage.
Okay.
But the actual, um, output of, of commercial kitchen can be, you know, several thousand dollars a month easily. And, um, so the idea was they have this huge pot of, of reso, of extra money that they're not spending. Um, let's measure how much that, how much electricity they actually use in their commercial kitchen. And then we could re, we could take that money and put it in the general fund. Um, that was the original, does that make sense?
So you want the actual reimbursement?
Yes. And, um, hoping that it's.
From food services?
From food services into the general.
Thank you.
Yes, a transfer from food services into general. My, what I was thinking, since we haven't really, maybe we just forgot about it. But, uh, if we wanna go forward with the idea, my thought was we could transfer that money instead of, I mean, it would still go to general, but it, it could go directly to the schools that, um, achieve those savings. And then there might be an incentive to, you know, reduce your own electric costs at that school. So I just, I don't know. I thought that would be another way to get them some more discretionary dollars. Um, and then they would be dollars that they'd like to earn, kind of, if that makes sense.
There, there are some districts that do an incentive to the schools. If, if they, they come up with a base year and then each year that they reduce their cost. Um, but there's, there's a lot of, you know, the, the temperature, the weather impacts that. Um, there's a lot of other things that impact that, too. Um, but it's, it's, it's usually not done based on the food service amount. It's usually based on just an incentive of some type. So that might be a program that, that might be of interest.
We've actually done that in Lake County before, but it was based on electricity. And we, if you saved or came in the top, whatever, you actually got money back into your discretionary fund.
Mm-hmm.
We did that for several years. I don't recall that I got a lot of money, but we did it.
What if you like, what if your athletic team wins a state championship? Could you get money back to your school? I'm just asking for a friend.
You should get some of the ticket gate money.
I just, okay, so I'm telling you that because we had to purchase their state rings.
Yeah.
Parents had to purchase their state rings. And I got a lot of, I didn't get any, I mean, ever, of course, the fundraiser was very successful. But I had a lot of people reach out to me personally and say, why would the school or the school board not buy these athletes' rings when they won a state title? And that's like the most prestigious thing that a sports team could do. And I was like, this is where my lines blur a little bit, because obviously I had, would have somebody that was receiving one of those rings, but.
But don't you think almost that, that, that for the community to get involved, raise the.
They have been, they have been so involved, though.
There's something to be proud of that, other than the district.
Listen, I hear you. I do. But I'm gonna tell you that the, I can speak on personal level, that the city of Eustis has been so involved. The community has been so, they, they raised their travel funds. They took them to and from state. They paid for their dinners. I mean, they really raised money for those girls to be represented. So I don't feel slighted. So please don't. It was just, it, people were kind of saying, what?
But when Plagueville High School went to, to state, they didn't win. No, that one they didn't win.
They didn't get the rings, right.
But the business community and individuals all came together. So, um, I, I was proud to, to give money.
And people have. That's why I said, nobody questioned giving money at all. The people on the side.
Why are you talking about it?
Because people texted me on the side and said.
I, I'm glad you brought it up, because it's a good point. Like, okay, so anytime we bring in somebody in here for district athletic recognition, we don't send them a bill and ask for five dollars out, when they're walking out the door from the metal, we just put it around their neck where, you win a trophy at the science fair, we don't say, okay, now you gotta pay us forty-five dollars for that trophy.
I know, but we didn't, we didn't do that at any time. But for the kids to get, this is, this is above and beyond to get a ring, right?
Yeah.
So this is above and beyond.
Sumter County paid for their students. Their Wildwood Boys won this year, too. And I know, because I had a mom on the team, their school district paid for their rings.
And Sumter County's got a Wildwood.
I know they do. And a lot less schools. And a lot less schools. I know about their impact fees, but it was just, it was brought to my attention. And again, I said that I understand and we have limited budget, we have limited resources for those types of things. But then we're like, that's like the most prestigious thing that that group can bring home for their school and their district and.
It'd be interesting to see what their, what their school budget looks like, if they had a rollover.
It would be. Good look at that. Good look at that.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, we beat this one. Good conversation. Okay, next. Mrs. Randall, in our capital plan.
Yay, I'm excited to hear about the playgrounds. I missed that.
Hey, I think they set me up with some expectations, so hopefully I manage to meet them all. Um, board chair, board members, superintendent, thank you for the opportunity to talk about the capital plan. Um, as you know, this is always my favorite thing to do during the year. So, and, and it's certainly become a lot more fun over the last couple of years when we actually have projects and it's not, well, there's nothing new to talk about. So, um, next slide, please. Uh, just, just a reminder, by the terms of our inter-local agreement with the, for school concurrency with our local governments and the county, um, these are the, the timeline. Um, we'll provide a draft to the local governments, um, once you've had a chance to hear it. And then my goal is to have it back to you by the first meeting in September. Um, next slide. Another reminder, the revenue sources basically are the three-legged stool. We have the ad valorem, which is our most flexible money. The impact fees, which is basically for new student stations and the sales tax proceeds. And we have, um, put out a list of the schools that we're going to have replaced or renovated. There's a variety of effects, um, for those sales tax proceeds. So we just always like to put this back in front of really the public to remind them of how our capital plan is funded. So next slide, please. Our revenue picture is looking better and better, um, as we go. I will caveat that with, when I joined the district in two thousand and six, our capital plan was seven hundred and fifty million dollars. We're still a long way from that, but at five hundred million dollars, it's certainly looking a lot healthier than it was. Um, there's been a continued increase in property tax revenue. The projected impact fee revenue, we've increased that slightly because we have been collecting that money. We had pulled it back because we didn't know what the effect of the pandemic was gonna be. But, um, as we've all seen, development continues. Single-family housing building and apartment housing building, if you go through the, uh, South Lake area is continued. We are collecting proportionate share mitigation agreements for three areas. Um, high schools in the South County, some, um, high school capacity in the North County. And then actually recently, we have, um, started collecting proportionate share mitigation for elementary schools in the Leesburg area. And we have some projects that offset that. So that's, um, not anything that we didn't expect. Uh, there's been an increase in the projected sales tax revenue. If you remember last year, again, because of the pandemic, we weren't sure what the effect was gonna be. So we had pulled that back to be conservative, um, not to promise anything that we couldn't give. And now we've seen that, you know, that expected decrease or anticipated decrease didn't happen. So we've put that back to a realistic level. Um, no change in the state funding. We're not really getting anything from the state besides CO and DS money. And those are relatively small pots of money, under a million dollars a year. And, uh, so because of the restrictions on that, what we like to do is add it up and spend it on one project. That way we're not putting those restrictions on multiple projects. So our over, total revenue projected again is about five hundred and fifteen million dollars. And that does include about eighty-four million dollars in carryover. So that's why that first year is always a lot longer, bigger than the, um, the other years as we go. So, next slide, please. This is our revenue projections. Are there any questions specific to that page? All right, next slide. Our ongoing expenditures, uh, we've been, Scott's and finance have. Our ongoing expenditures, uh, we've been, Scott's and Finance have done a great job in refunding our cops. That's led to lower debt payment. Um, and so that helps give us some money to spend on other things. As we discussed, the, um, we have increased the bus purchase funding for the first two years because basically those newer buses, as you said, um, allow us to lower operating costs. Better efficiency, better gas mileage, fewer repairs. And so we've moved that money, it was in the outer years of the plan, we've moved it forward. So we'll be able to increase that buses and, um, get us on track. There was some discussion last year and maybe even the year before about how long we would need to maintain white fleet funding. Um, we went back and did a lot of work, I think the auditor has done a lot of work. We have, uh, two million dollars in replacement costs on vehicles that are over fifteen years old. So we're probably gonna be keeping this white fleet funding at this level for, for quite a while. Um, they've done a great job in getting some lower-cost vehicles. That increases, again, increases our gas mileage, lowers our repair costs. And so we'll be probably keeping that, you'll see that five hundred thousand dollar, or five hundred, yes, five hundred thousand dollar level, um, for quite a few years. And then we are, we've restored the maintenance backlog, um, or restored the maintenance funding that helps us address a backlog in maintenance, um, projects. Again, that's the money that pays for things like chillers, new lighting system. Again, we are really trying to make sure that our operational costs are reduced by spending our capital dollars wisely. So, next slide, please. Um, ongoing expenditures. Really shouldn't be anything surprising here, any questions on that? All right, so this is where we get fun, when we get to the work plan, so next slide. So what are we doing? Our first projects in quite a while, August of two thousand and twenty-one, Lake Point Academy opens. Um, I got a chance to do my fish validation, even without, uh, furniture or teachers there. It was really exciting to walk through that facility and see, and I can't wait to see the kids' faces on the first day of school. And they, they get to see that. Uh, we are also opening the Lake Mineola High additions. And as we've discussed in the past, we'll be filling those, um, seats through educational choice. We did not adjust their attendance boundary, um, and that seems to have been very successful. They actually got a lot more choice, um, applications than we allowed through because we wanna make sure we phase that and we don't overwhelm in any one particular year, um, as we go through. So, uh, next slide. Some new capacity projects, um, again, nothing really unusual here. Our Mineola Area Relief K eight is fully funded in twenty-two, twenty-three and projected to open in twenty-twenty-four. Um, we'll be working with the developer on that site to go ahead and access it. And, um, we'll be starting the design this year on that and, uh, and starting to move forward. Um, you will unfortunately be seeing an attendance boundary. Could let you know right up front, but we'll try and get that done as smoothly as the last one went. Um, projects to build permanent capacity, we talked about this last year. We have the Villages Elementary School addition and an addition at Windy Hill, um, Middle School. And largely those are to replace portables and there's a timing issue with those, so we'd like to go ahead and take care of them now. Um, before we have so many portables on the site that we can't, uh, can't actually get additions built. Um, and then we're also continuing to build the funding for that South County High School that we're gonna need in the Wellness Way area. Next slide. On sales tax, uh, we have a really cool academy construction starting. They are through with design and we should be, um, underway this fall on that school. Um, so that's pretty exciting. Next slide. Also a sales tax project, the Fruitland Park Elementary School replacement. We decided this past spring to go ahead and move forward with the new site. That's about a mile or so south of the existing Fruitland Park Elementary School. We do need to make a change on the, um, land use on that site. Right now it is zone four residential or a, something that's not appropriate. And so we'll be, um, filing for that here pretty soon and then start design as well and construction next year. We have programmed that for opening in August of two thousand and twenty-four. So, next slide. Uh, we also have sales tax projects that are on track. The Beverly Shores renovation, that's largely replacement of those wing buildings and portables. That's fully funded in twenty-three, twenty-four. Eustis Elementary School is funded in twenty-four, twenty-five. And, uh, we'll be working through that project and, um, determining what exactly it's gonna look like. Uh, the Kurt Wright Center, so that started rolling in and is fully funded in twenty-five, twenty-six, um, which is the last year of this plan. And we've heard from the community and the administration and teachers that, and for a lot of reasons, really educationally, capacity, um, that we'd like to explore the possibility of building an addition on the Eustis High Main campus that would allow us to move those ninth graders over to the Eustis High Main campus. It's not as simple as just building an addition, there's some stormwater, some parking issues, um, but I think we've moved a hundred thousand dollars in for studies in this first year. And, um, would like to go ahead and explore that. And then, once we have a better idea of what exactly that would look like in next year's plan, we would go ahead and revise whatever funding we needed. But we wanted to go ahead and take this opportunity to look and make sure that that is something that we can move forward with.
Where, what's the idea with that one? Where, where, where does it go?
So, yeah, part of, part of what we need to study and determine, um, there's a practice field right next to.
The softball field?
No, this is actually a practice field that's up on the road next to their building five, which is a two-story classroom addition or.
You've been in the softball field, it's up on the hill, and it's up right beside.
Up by the road.
Where the bus loop is.
Right. So, um, so basically we would need to, in order to bring the school to about fifteen hundred capacity, we would need to add about six hundred and eighty-five student stations. What that basically looks like is building five, which is a two-story, but a three-story version of that. Um, there's also some CTE rooms that would need to be added, um, to the site in order to, to allow for the CTE programs that Eustis High is adding. So really, you know, we'd be looking at a master plan, kind of figuring out what that looks like over this next year. All right. Um, and then partially funded, rolling into this plan, um, is the conversion of Oak Park and Leesburg Elementary into a K eight. Um, Oak Park is really running at about the size of a K population, middle school population. And so that's something that was in the plan, um, the long-term plan from quite a while ago. So that starts to roll in and then should be fully funded next year.
So, I'm just, can I ask, i- is that like, Leesburg Elementary is the newer school? So, will Oak Park still be there or go away, or do we not know yet?
At Oak Park, there are, um, there's a music building and a, um, and the gym that were added when they converted to a middle school. I, sometime in the eighties, I believe. And so those are actually in relatively good shape and could be reused. So it's really a question of how to, um, to combine it so that the, in my, in my early, early assessment, and so there, you know, might be things that need to be changed, but, um, would be basically that you would build the remainder of the facility in between the two schools. So you'd have the gym and the music room up here, you'd have the classrooms and everything for the middle school portion here. Um, and then you'd have Leesburg Elementary. And there's, um, quite a few portables at Leesburg Elementary, so those would be replaced as well as part of this, this project.
That's great, so, that'd be great.
Yeah, so it's kind of one of those, it's, um, definitely not a prototype project. It's gonna definitely need some work, um.
So that becomes one school from an operating standpoint.
It becomes a K eight from an operating standpoint.
It would also look, I mean, somehow in the way Leesburg Elementary sits on the road and Oak Park, there's two sets of gates and it just looks from the road. It's, it's just very, uh, prison-like, uh, unfortunately, just because of the layers of gates, so. I, I would think this would be really much nicer for kids. Very kid-friendly, yeah.
So that'll, I think that'll be an interesting project as we go through it and, um, kinda see how it, it works. And of course, you know, it's an interesting transition because Oak Park was originally an elementary school way back when, and so it'll be, uh.
You're dating me, way back when I worked there.
Oak Park, yeah, let me try this.
Ms. Randall, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Eustis Elementary, have you been able to secure all the property we need now around that school?
We have not, there are two, um, remaining residential lots that.
That's where we were like three years ago.
And that's still where we were three years ago, yes. So, um, so we will go out and make a real push this year. Um, actually, I don't wanna surprise the superintendent, but since the board is, is here, we're talking about that. Um, when we purchased the properties, um, ten years ago or so, one of the things that we were able to offer the homesteaded properties was the opportunity to still live in that property for a year while they basically were able to, um, to move forward. They had to pay for their own insurance, their own maintenance, you know, any utility costs. But it was part of the agreement, the, the contract with them, that they could stay there for a year. It worked out well for all of them. Um, I don't think any of you were on the board at that time, so since I have the opportunity, um, wanna see whether there's any objections to being able to, to offer that.
One hundred percent, I think you should.
Are you talking about those rental properties?
So there's one, um, homesteaded property and one that I believe is a rental. It was a rental last time we moved out. So really it'd just be the one property.
You could give them until, we're not gonna do anything until we're funded, so really you have up to twenty-twenty-four, right? So I don't think.
Yeah, I mean, you know, they probably wanna move forward, but it's, it was, um, it really worked out well for those people because it gave them time to go off and find another site.
Yeah, that's brilliant.
Okay, all right, as long as there's no objections, um, that just kinda hit my head this morning and I was like, well, since you brought it up. Um, all right, so next slide, please. Um, these are the modernization capital renewal projects that we've been rolling into the plan. Uh, this largely consists of things like, I think I described it to you last year as we have schools that are going on like a twenty-five-year, um, life cycle. We wanna go ahead and bring them to the point where they're good for another twenty-five years. And so it's things like stormwater, HVAC, roofing, doors, windows, new lighting, painting, flooring. It's basically all the stuff that gets us going for another twenty-five years. And at the same time, we're able to bring in some of those operational efficiencies. So things like, um, new lighting systems, LED lighting basically costs us a lot less than electricity. So, so we're trying to go ahead and roll those in. Um, Eustis Middle School and Grove Land Elementary were in the plan previously and are funded. Um, we've added projects for Taveri's Middle School, Astutula Elementary and South Lake High School. And then the outer two years, um, are basically just pots of money. And so we'll determine those projects as we move forward. Next year, you'll see a couple of new schools in there. So, um, and then the elementary school, what everybody's been waiting for, um, elementary school playground.
I totally missed that line, I think I was too busy looking at the projects back here, like, okay, yay.
So, um, so we heard loud and clear that the elementary school, um, playgrounds are, are a concern. Our staff has gone out, um, between grounds and, um, risk management and maintenance staff. They've gone out, they've done an assessment of all the playgrounds. And so what we've added in is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And that will pay for through, um, three to four playground replacements a year, um, based on that condition. And really the goal is to go for equity with what we're building in new schools. So, you know, if a school has four or five playgrounds already that are in great condition, they have one that's not in great condition, that would not be one of our top priorities. But if a school has one or two playgrounds and, you know, both are in poor condition, they would become a priority. So, um, those projects are being assessed and we'll be working with the schools individually to go ahead and figure out which of those are a priority. But that is something that's funded through the, the five years. And, um, and hopefully we should be able to, to get all of our playgrounds in great condition by now.
Um, can I just, I, love it, I mean.
I'm like, can I just? Okay.
Um, I just, I thought we couldn't use, like, there was a rule, I thought, that we couldn't use funds to replace playgrounds or scoreboards or, uh, um, stadium seating? Like, I, I, like, somebody told me at some point, we couldn't do that with school funds.
So I'm gonna let Scott.
So I'm confused how we're doing it, and I'm all for it.
So there's, excuse me, uh, there's several of the funding that come from the state was restricted. You've always been able to use your village money to do that, your bill and a half. Um, but Pico used to have some pretty strong language, you could not use it for like football stadiums and stadiums and stuff like that. But we've always had the village.
Oh, okay, okay, so it was just a misunderstanding.
There's a public purpose to having, so, you know, it's, it's.
Great, fabulous.
May I ask a question? I'm sure you thought of this, but, for example, Clermont Elementary has a brand-new playground that they just opened. Have you given thought to what will happen to that equipment when that school isn't a school anymore?
So, a lot of the, so the schools that we're replacing or we're, we're doing something with, like Clermont Elementary, um, in this case like Fruitland Park, um, the plan has been that they would be able to move that equipment. So we've been trying to make sure that those schools are aware that, you know, when they plan for things like this, they need to be able to, to move that equipment, um, and, and that's gone down to other things as well. When they've replaced HVAC units, um, new freezer at Clermont Elementary. Making sure that we're not spending money on something that's gonna get abandoned.
So we can use it, okay, thank you.
And I, this is the playground money, and I'm thinking like you did for a year, you're looking at like six, seven years. We wouldn't anticipate that after that, we're just gonna continue to replace playground equipment.
So I think that we need to assess that once we kinda get caught up. Um, for my, from everything that I was told, everything that I was given, it looks like a playground, um, life cycle is about fifteen to twenty years. And so, you know, once we kinda get to that point, we'll have to look at what it, what it takes to continue that and not get back in the same position.
Or put it, I mean, I, I was just thinking of all the things you could put in that spot, right? Like, you just said, like stadium or, or sound systems or scoreboards or, or even band equipment. Like all those areas that we know we'd like to support and, I don't know, you don't need to support them every year, you don't, it's not something.
You are opening where I was going with the conversation now. So, no, seriously, that, if we're adding playground equipment to our five-year capital plan, which has typically been construction, but now that we've moved into playgrounds, do we, right now where we have our, we have needs for, in Mount Dora, for football field and baseball field, we have a triangle we need in Taveri's and.
Softball field at Eustis.
Softball field in Mineola.
Yeah.
That, that those are now handled through the maintenance at this point. But is it something that should move over to here? If playground seems pretty minuscule to me with some really major expenses we have and needs, um, individually.
So we kinda had that discussion, um, internally among the staff. And, you know, they felt like, uh, when my conversations with Mr. Carr and Mr. Wingo, they felt like they were able to address some of those through their regular budget. Um, and so we decided not to make them specific line item things. I know he's been doing a lot of work on that. Um, you know. As far as being able to, to separate them out, um, so that the schools know that there's some surety there, we could probably do that. But from a, um, making sure that we have a financially feasible and balanced budget, I'd probably just have to take them out of the, the maintenance funds.
But I'm just wondering why we would extract playground equipment?
Cause we wanted to make sure that that playground equipment was, that it was a focus. And we knew it was a.
But what if I wanna focus on the fact that Mount Dora football field for like eight years, I've heard about it, and it's sinking? That. If, if, I'm just curious, I mean, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, but if, if the other can be handled through maintenance and why, why can't we just ensure that this is, so that it's not part of the capital plan? Or, in my mind, why would we not have a five-year plan to address these really serious capital investments? So that we're voting which one gets priority? And the one thing that we've always been transparent about. So that we're voting which one gets priority and the one thing that we've always been transparent about is our pay-as-you-go. And then we can show people, we don't have three hundred thousand dollars or in the case of, I was just sent a uh an estimate the other day, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. For the baseball field at Mount Dora, um that we could say, we don't have it now, but in four years we'll have it. And once somebody knows and with fidelity, we work our plan, which we have ever since I've been on the board. It's better than just saying, oh, we gotta try and find some money in maintenance, cause that's kind of the go-to right now.
And I think it helps because then he's not contacting them about Mount Dora and I'm not calling them about Eustace or Umatilla. And they're not calling about their prospective schools like we are, it's similar to all of these renovations, like everybody's got the plan, we know the order. We can duke it out here, but it's then it's prevalent out there. And I will also say that it's just very encouraging to have these conversations, cause when I came on the board seven years ago, we were in no position to have the conversation. To add any of this stuff, so it's a testament to the pay-as-you-go and to the work that your department has done, so and and Mr. Ward's department. So it's exciting to be able to have these conversations, but I think now that they're on the table, it would be very wise and it would probably take some stress off of Mr. Carr getting phone calls. From all of us about these different athletic fields and.
So I can, I mean, if that's the board's preference, I can add line items for those projects.
Well, and I think just like we've done everything else, then they're prioritized.
Yeah, I I think I. Yeah.
And then then we're going forward straight and um because you get into a conversation, this is with a friend by the way, so I didn't need to get somebody else's sandbox. But it went from the baseball field being a problem and he's gonna help do that, then he goes, well, and then we need a dugout and a workout room.
Yes, the list gets really long and expensive. Yes, yes.
So.
Yes.
I I I, yeah, I think it'd just be helpful to know what the priorities are out there and then or you know, what the wish list is and allows us to prioritize. Yeah, I, as I'm looking about at this, I'm like, okay, do we, do we have twelve elementary playgrounds that need to be replaced in the next three years? I don't know.
I'm sure we do.
You know, is that the most pressing need?
Yes. On this end of the county, yes, we don't have all the new schools.
Is is it important to put some shade on those playgrounds?
Right, 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 right.
You know, because you know, I'll tell you that that's the first thing that PTO starts doing at a school, is they start raising money for the shade structure. Because it's, you know, the the temperature of the slides a hundred and twelve degrees and you're like, it's pointless to have it out there, you know, so.
I will say, we were at LPA and we touched the slide, cause we were like, wow, this is new shade. It's not, I don't know what they made out of that, uh those new slides.
It's not the old metal ones like we had.
So maybe going forward, the shade won't be as. But you know, I I I think it is just something to consider, because some schools, yeah, their playground is out in the middle of, you know, nowhere and there's not a single tree in sight. And others are a little more naturally shaded, I I guess it's just something I'd like to keep in mind, uh having been the teacher out there watching the kids on the retest. Go, oh my word, I'm sorry y'all are are dying, but we'll go in seventeen more minutes, you know.
Um also, since we're adding things to a potential list.
Kelly's like, I'm done, I'm leaving.
Um uh uh covered walkways, that is a constant, like. We had another, Treadway and Parents had another conversation about that and I was like, look, I've been trying, but they're all expensive and, you know.
Well, for how long, I know. I remember the conversation.
No, no, we we had gotten a summary one time of what it would cost, so, but it wasn't its own specific line item, it would go, you know, defunded.
But it's treadway specific because it's that whole back portable section that's all uncovered.
Yeah, treadway is frustrating, cause every time it rains, the kids have to go into a actual structure as opposed to a portable structure. So it's just, it's it's a constant interruption and that some, and then they have interrupted lunches, it's a big.
So let me just make sure, so so some of these, I I have to say will probably be, continue to be wish lists for a little while. Although, you know, we can, we can work on it, but.
Actually, one thousand percent understand that part, but now, you've opened Pandora's box with bringing out equipment, just saying.
But I do understand.
But I also do agree that that it is appropriate that we can now say, just like we have with our other projects. Here is your timeline, and people, once they know there's a timeline, it is the fact that, let me make a phone call. And then when you make the phone call, Mr. Carr goes, well, I don't have any money, and then I'll try and find some money.
Yes.
And then you don't find any money.
I love it.
Takes it really out of.
Okay. So I'm.
I think that's, I, yeah, I thi- I think to your point, it's done so well with the sales tax list of projects that we can point to, the folks at Eustace or Fruitland Park and say, hey, look, it's coming. This is the timeline and you know, there's, some folks have just been hearing about, oh, I'm gonna get a new school, I heard that ten years ago, it's not happening, you know, and and.
Yeah, been there.
So the wish list might be wrong, but at least, you know, you know what you're saying.
The immediate ones, and I know these are ones that I've heard a lot about, um but the Mount Dora football field, the Taveries High School track. And the Eustace High softball field, and I want to make sure that um not leaving, well.
Like Minneola, they're they're tried field, but I think that was taken care of.
Well, I would check with John, Mr. Carr, right, it's gonna be.
It seems like you just have to do a whole inventory of everybody's stuff and prioritize, right, because just because somebody's picked up the phone and called. Stephanie doesn't mean that they jumped the list.
I mean, technically it does, but.
And I promise you that once you go, once you survey with your administrators, you will get a list.
Yes, you will.
Like, not a little bit. And then it's appropriate for John to do an assessment and then just come up with a timeline, that's my opinion.
I love it.
Right, okay, I really like this concept and just to like, him or at home, we had to condemn the the stadium seating. The the for the away team at Leesburg High and then it became like, how can we possibly find this, how can we, so we like. John was amazing and did find seating, but it was, it was, it was really a challenge, so.
So would it be the board's expectation that this would be a revision to this current plan or that this would be in next year's plan?
How difficult would it be to revise it for this year's plan?
Um. Put in everybody's stuff, but I could put in at least these high priority, well, maybe. Depending on how much it is and um and how much is already allocated in the maintenance budget.
Yeah, because if there were dollars allocated, then they would just shift over, right?
Right.
So, is it a lot, actually, I'll tell you through, if it's not, if it's not a lot of work, I'd like for us to start it fresh with this one, is that?
As long as we keep the kids that have, like treadway, I think that's major. I mean, I've been in a position where I had to buy umbrellas and give every teacher twenty-five umbrellas, cause you never know when it's gonna rain. And kids gotta have an umbrella to get the lunch, so you know, if we got, if we have funding, I'd like to see us consider that.
And where were we with the sidewalks, the covers?
With the covers, last I had talked with John, he was looking at and I think he had even installed some sort of canvas covers. But I don't, I don't have a follow-up, like he was trying some less expensive options.
I don't think there was anything wrong with canvas, by the way.
I understand that it takes time, I just don't want them to get lost in the.
Yeah, it just, I think it did just sort of get dropped, you know, COVID.
Well, and of course, there's so many of these.
Coming out, we'd be seeing it if it was on this plan.
Right, right, and so many of those schools, like Treadway is actually the next one after Oak Park and.
Oh, okay, I was checking to see if I saw it on the list and I didn't see it.
But that's where you use canvas in lieu of aluminum, because it it's a lot less expensive and.
Anything that, you know, protects them from the water.
Expensive right this minute.
Nothing is inexpensive.
Okay, so I will work with Mr. Carr and um and Mr. Wingo and get some of those line items broken out and then we'll get the plan back to you. Um for that, um okay, so I think next slide, I don't know that I have a lot more.
Excuse me, just one thing, I have one last comment, where we can, where some of the funding that I know from a sale was restricted. Then that wouldn't move, if there's a Leesburg school that needs a capital item, how does that work, Scott? You would just allocate the dollars?
Well, what I was planning on doing is at an upcoming meeting, come in and actually discuss what. Right now, I was just sitting there, uh we used some of that funding to to offset the cost to the new ag farm, um to get them up and operating. Um but but after that, we really haven't done anything with it, so I I think it's worth the board sitting down and having a conversation about what they can and and want to do with that funding. Versus just letting it sit there. Thanks, Tony.
Unfortunately, that doesn't go in my funding pot. Um okay, so and then land acquisition, um we, I'm starting to get a little bit concerned about some of these. Areas that we have um a lot of growth coming, so Wellness Way, um guys have heard probably ad nauseam about the high school site. Unfortunately, the infrastructure is not quite there yet, people haven't started breaking out properties, but we continue to pursue that. Um and also an elementary school site for the the long term, right now, basically the the changes that we've made. With adding Lake Point Academy um have reduced, um relieved Sawgrass Bay. And so Sawgrass Bay will be able to take a lot of the growth, we're seeing our first students out of Wellness Way um subdivisions coming in. And um and then again with uh the relief that hit Windy Hill, which will be the zoned middle school. But the high school remains a problem, um remains a concern, so we are building that funding spot. I am still looking for that high school site and working with some of the developers on that. Um and then we are actually seeing a lot of new growth in um the kind of south grew or north Groveland, south Leesburg area. West of Howie and the Hills and so I am actually seeing enough growth that I think that we are looking at a another high school. An elementary, three elementaries and um a middle school, if we don't continue to build K eights. And so we are going to be working on some of that land acquisition um as we move forward. So I just uh wanted to let you know, hopefully I'll be bringing back some school sites for you and I think that was it, I think the next thing is question.
You don't have, we have no land down in, I just am thinking Wellness Way area, land has to be expensive, right?
Yes, yeah, you've got all these developers who are coming together to create this master plan as opposed to people just, you know, piecemealing things off.
Well, can we get all these developers to donate us some land?
So that was some of the conversation initially, right, but then COVID struck and and the group stopped having those meetings, at least in person. So I was, I was gonna ask, have you heard much chatter from those folks or are they still continuing with this?
So they have been, so they are actually moving forward with um some plan amendment adoption hearings. Um at the county and at the city of Clermont. Uh their consultant, Dr. Levy, has been really good about, you know, working on our behalf, honestly, to to try and move that forward. And really, the the big issue is that um they haven't gotten to the point where they started subdividing that land. So there's a lot of big parcels and so they haven't started subdividing in order to identify actual sites. But they they are aware that, you know, a site is an issue for us, that we're gonna keep pushing and keep moving forward with it. There's one or two who are the most likely um to be able to provide that site for us. Now, I will say in the the recent legislative changes, um we will probably, it will be difficult to get sites donated to us. Because um the legislative changes basically say that we have to provide impact fee credits or, you know, reimburse those developers and so on. And so, you know, impact fee credits, it's a kind of a long-term way to finance a a purchase, so I'm okay with that.
So, and just thinking about the cost of a high school, I mean, we're talking a million dollars?
Probably more.
Or more, especially maybe five years from now, so I guess if I see twenty-three million dollars sitting here in the fifth year of this project. I mean, the following year, I'm I'm not anticipating it's gonna say seventy-five million, right? Sitting there, so so this is probably not gonna be like in the sixth year fully funded, it's gonna be multi-year to fund this thing. I guess we're still probably talking a decade from now before that high school get built, right?
You know, I am hoping that we will um, that it will pick up as more developers come in, we are collecting proportionate share mitigation for that. And so basically, that's a way of um, we give them impact fee credits down the the road, but they give us cash upfront. And so um I am hoping that we'll be able to build that pot a little more quickly. I anticipate um sometime between the five and ten-year horizon for that high school.
I I I think maybe I'd be curious just to looking at the um, I think in the past I've seen a document that shows you the the permanent versus relocatable. Capacity at at schools and and where their actual numbers are, just to just kind of see the trend over the last few years, at least in the three south counties high schools to see. What that looks like, I know we're providing the relief at Lake Minneola because of the rezone, South Lake kind of filled itself up. I know East Ridge is the largest of the high schools and, you know, I asked my school people, hey, what can I be advocating for? You know, I'm hearing a building for East Ridge High School, and I mean, if we're talking ten years from now, before we could survive relief.
We got Pinecrest that's open to the high school.
You can't put another building at East Ridge.
I know, that can't be, that can't be the long-term plan already, being the long, the largest school in the size that it is. But when we're talking ten years from now, potentially of of this high school, that's regular anxiety and and think about, I don't know how they'd be able to survive ten years worth of growth. Um so, yeah, I I guess, I guess I need to feel some reassurance that, you know, it's not gonna be ten years that.
So after our, I mean, I I, I am hesitant to provide you any enrollment information from last year. Cause I think it's basically meaningless, frankly.
Last year's kind of wacky.
Uh yeah, but um but after our enrollment comes out, I know the the document that you're talking about, it basically looks at, you know, what our our enroll. Or our enrollment versus our permanent versus relocatable capacity and we can go ahead and produce that again in um in October. And let you know what that looks like, um you know, a- as far as East Ridge, a part of the problem with a high school too, though, is that you need to be able to have the students to fill it.
Right.
So, you know, we've provided some relief through the additions at Lake Minneola, we have Pinecrest um that's coming through. And is is taking some of that as well and so, you know, I I am hesitant to overpromise. And then not have the students to be able to to efficiently run a high school, um.
Yeah, I I think you almost run into this bit of a catch-twenty-two, cause as as students start to feel crowded in a school. Then suddenly, there's this perception from the parents that, hey, their service level is going down, I'm gonna look for alternatives, okay, now, oh, here's this, here's this new school, I'm gonna go there. But then we have to realize that, you know, maybe um seven thousand dollars for the funding leaves us, but more, but you know, seven thousand dollars of expenses. Don't necessarily leave us when that kid also departs and so um then we run into this this FGE issue and suddenly we start taking some hits on.
Yeah.
Operating dollars.
Right, well, I think this this coming year will really kind of tell us a lot about, you know, what our our picture is gonna look like. Kids come back, of course, at high school, they're back, you know, they're eligible to be vaccinated. And so I think those parents are more likely to to send their kids back, um and we'll get a a better picture. You know, I I don't think, I think we're a race from Orange County's adding two high schools in a year, you know, so um. So uh we're definitely keeping an eye on it and I think that area, once the, once the roads are there. And the the water and sewer infrastructure is there in Wellness Way, I, you know, I expect it to explode. And so it's really a matter of that timing.
You're right, yeah, I mean, I'm seeing land moving every day as I drive past there and I I just know it's a matter of time until this thing just takes off exponentially. And then suddenly, we've got thirty thousand new houses and and not this place, not the, not the space for them, so.
So we are definitely, uh that is very high on my priority list, so we're we're working forward and um. And hopefully, we'll be able to start building that funding pot a little more as we go.
The the other, the other piece I wanted to ask about down in the south, and Clermont Elementary School, it says demolition slash pre-K center. Um I I I'm not sure if the word demolition should stand there, I I know, you know, there are some community groups working at at that space. And and if they see that, hey, they're planning on demolishing it, uh would that cause a certain level of anxiety or, you know, I don't know. Some doubts on the relationship or our support, um.
I took your meeting, so basically what I I added that in because. No matter how we move forward, there's gonna be some expense to the district on that site. So, you know, we have building eighteen that we want to keep as a pre-K center, we're gonna have to provide parking, we're gonna have to provide um playground. We're gonna have to provide some stormwater, they're just on our portion of it. Um and, you know, depending on how that goes, um our discussions go. I don't know what we might end up having to do with the rest of it, so um I am open to any other wording.
I, could we, could we, could we just take out the word demolition, just leave the two million dollars here plugged in and.
Sure.
And we know that, okay, the. And we know that, okay, the pre-K center won't cost full two million dollars. And so if this falls through and we have to demolish it, then we have the word back here.
Gotcha. I can do that.
Alright, now. Would you go?
Is that good?
Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Kelly.
Alright, thank you. I appreciate it. And, uh, we will get those slight revisions back to you.
Hey, Mr. Mock.
Hey, I have two, um, audit reports to present to the board this morning. Uh, the first audit report will be the charter school billing audit. Next slide, please. Right, the, um, this audit, um, the board recommended a few years back to do. And, um, we kinda delayed that, if you remember, because, um, the school district was putting together some, um, procedures and processes for, um, how they were going to administer, uh, this over the, um, over the charter schools. And they put together, um, uh, the, some, uh, annual, um, guidance that, uh, for what products and services that the school district would, um, bill them outside of their annual administration fees or any mandatory fees that the charter school, or the conversion charter schools would be paying. Uh, so that's why this audit was delayed until we just did it this year. Uh, and the objectives of the audit were to, um, audit the charter schools' billings, uh, that were provided for management's assurance that all services and products rendered are billed properly. And the scope of the audit, I, I chose the scope of the audit was for the nineteen-twenty school year. Uh, so, next slide, please. Um, jumping ahead, uh, in, in the audit report, I, I kinda gave you a, a fairly detailed background on the charter schools and the conversion charter schools and, um, the information about the, the billing, so I won't go through that. But the, the main findings from, from this audit, uh, came out that a few, I found a few of the, uh, billings that I sampled and I was tracing those to the, um, um, the, the, uh, the, the products and services, uh, fee schedules for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. And I just found a couple items, uh, basically that were not on there that were being billed. So the, the idea, uh, basically I, I've got with the directors in those areas and went over, um, asking why they weren't on there. And they were just oversights, so they were going to add those to the, which would obviously be the twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, fee schedules. So those will be added on, um, and, and, uh, any fees that were not, um, properly, um, indicating the amount billed, they would, um, correct those as well. The other area, um, that I, that I saw, yeah, working through this was, um, uh, looking at the administration fees that, that are charged to the, um, charter schools. And, uh, from the report, you'll, you'll, you'll see that, uh, we charge a five percent fee and it's capped at two hundred and fifty students per charter school. That five percent fee can be reduced if the charter school's a, uh, high-performing school. And, um, so, so tho- those fees, uh, do have restrictions around them and the amount that we can bill those. Uh, finance department puts together a spreadsheet to track those, uh, monthly. And, uh, the fees are, are charged to the, um, to the conversion, to the charters and the conversion charter schools. So, uh, let's see, the district's- So, next slide, on slide four. Um, one, one, this area, it falls into other matters. Um, can't make a recommendation to make any changes because we're following state guidelines. But if we could, I, I would recommend that the school, when they meet with, uh, state legislation, discuss, um, changing this. This is probably something that was implemented many years ago. I don't know how far back it goes. But the two hundred and fifty, I would look at the, first, the two hundred and fifty cap seems to be kinda small. If we could raise that to five hundred, you could see our, our, uh, what we would cover in our administration fees. And that administration fees would cover what finance is doing and budgeting and FTE payroll. It would cover, uh, a lot of our IT services that, uh, that they're providing, um, HR, risk management. So a lot of these fees, that, that five percent is trying to cover. And, and then when you take the fact that, I think, um, what do we got? Three high-performing? That reduces the fee down to two percent. We lose three percent on top of that. So our fee is, is greatly reduced. Um, and, and in turn, you know, I know the board wanted to know, you know, where, why we're not getting, you know, where's the money at that we're not getting? I think a lot of it is sitting right here where, where we're not getting the money that we need to, to help, um, run and administer the charter schools for the school district. And I also understand from doing this audit that-
We have a choice about that, right?
Yep, that's-
No, that's why I was saying we'd have to meet with state legislation and, and see if, see if changes could be made. I know it's a, it's a hard hurdle to, to go over, but-
Cause they're so pro, so pro public school.
Yeah, I know.
That's right.
Yeah, no.
This is on purpose. This is meant to.
Okay, keep going.
Yeah, but it, but in turn, what, what it ends up doing is it costs us out of our operating fund, right, to, to run these charter schools? So you're wondering where your, your dollars out of your operating fund are going. Well, they're going to running charter schools. And not running the public schools. So if you don't work with your state legislation to say, hey, you know, we need to fix something that's not right, I think you're trying that in other areas. So that, that's my recommendation. This is, okay, thank you. So, um, with that, next slide, please. Um, this will go into the, uh, each year I do the, uh, internal audit self-assessment. Last year, if you remember, we had a, uh, a self-assessor come in and look over my work to, to, um, I guess validate the fact that I'm, I'm doing my, uh, work correctly and my, my evaluation of the department and where I stand in implementing the Institute of Internal Audit Standards. Um, this year I just did another self-assessment. Because of the work that was done last year, uh, I was able to increase my overall compliance up to ninety-nine point two percent. A lot of that comes from the fact that I did an external self-assessment and that I'm including now in each of my audit reports the fact that I, I adhere to the IIA standards. Uh, the areas that I don't fully comply, obviously, is, is just through the fact that I'm a one-person audit shop and there's really no way to get general compliance with those standards, being the fact I'm just one person. I, it, it has to do with supervision and oversight. I'm basically supervising and oversight of myself, so that doesn't-
You're doing a pretty good job.
Yeah, that doesn't come, but it doesn't comply with the standard is the only thing. So I give myself a partially comply there. So, um, just so, um, to help those that, for the first, since I'm doing this for the first time for them, the attribute standards on, on slide seven, which is next slide, those are the, uh, those are the standards for the overall of the department. And then, um, you go two more slides, you get to the-
Sure, what is the heading? G C, B C?
General compliance, partially comply, do not comply. It, they're just basically-
Yeah.
Um, so you go to nine, slide nine. The performance standards are how I perform the, the audits that I do, each individual audit. So that's the audit work that's performed. So that's, that's just kinda give you an idea of, um, those are the two areas. Attribute standards and performance standards for the, uh, internal audit department. With that, I'll answer any questions for either of those audits.
So suddenly you're gonna have your audit committee also do an assessment?
I, I do not have them provide an assessment. I mean, they, they would have to come in and look at the work to, to do that, but-
But you, they look at the work when you present it first, right?
I present all my work that I do to them and they, they approve the audit plan and-
It just seems like I give up.
Yeah, well, I cover this with them, so.
I'm sorry, I have one question. On page nine-
Yes.
All of the little blocks have something in them. Is that just a typo, those last two that have the little, or does that mean something? It, it isn't that way on the other pages.
Oh.
Do you understand my question?
Yeah, it just, it just came through when I copied and pasted. Sorry, it was just, yeah, it's just, it's just from the Word document that it comes from. I'm sorry. The, those little dots, yes, they're just, yeah.
And I have something for the board, and it's actually, if anyone's good with the first two, the, the charter and the, um, and this assessment, that I wanna bring up something.
I do wanna talk about a little bit more on the charter one.
Yeah, I-
Okay, please. We'll bring that into the closed form and go with what I have.
Okay, you wanna do that now?
Uh-
You wanna do that now?
Yes.
Okay, oh, thank you. Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so, um, so I guess one observation I have is that I, I guess in the, in the scope of the audit, looked like you were pulling invoices or, or receipts that were actually-
Invoices.
Right, right, rendered, um, and figuring out if that was proper or if we were capturing all that.
Yes.
I, I guess the other piece that I'm thinking of is how many times are we doing a service that is not captured through any sort of invoice, you know?
Yeah, what I did there was I communicated with each director of the departments. And I, I asked them if all products and services that they rendered during the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year were billed. I received confirmation from all of them that they had billed every service and product that I guess that they were able to.
Yeah, so I guess, I, I guess I wonder about that method, you know? For instance, let's say, um, you know, charter school calls up one of the program specialists and says, hey, walk me through-
Yep.
Science fair. I don't know. And they spend thirty minutes on the phone with the person from Science Fair. That, that talk about Science Fair probably isn't on the menu, doesn't get invoiced, you know, so that was, you know, thirty minutes of our employee that, you know, we don't, we don't recoup. Not, and, and really there's like the double expense of that. One, you've got the cost of providing the service for nothing. But then it also takes our own employee away from the work that they could be doing to support our own schools. Uh, so I just wondered, you know, how many of those sorts of services are occurring out there? You know, I, I, I think a great example of this too is, I don't remember, was it Best and Brightest or something, maybe a couple of years ago, where we had to submit a plan to the state of exactly how it was gonna roll out? And then like nearly every single charter school had done it incorrectly, except for like one? Was that, was it Best and Brightest? I don't remember if it was that, but then your department had to go through and-
That was last year's teacher salary.
There it was. Okay, that's the one. And so then you had to go through and get everybody to do it right, you know? So that's, once again, another expense that, um, once again takes our people away from their-
Yeah.
Normal duties of supporting our schools.
And some of that falls under the administration, five percent.
So that, that-
Which gets deducted to two percent if they're a high performer.
So it seems, it seems, to your point, grossly under, uh, the target of, of what it would actually cost or-
And Mr. Ward and I had a, a fairly long conversation about charging overhead. You know, because none of the billings provide a charge for overhead. Some of that is the time, like putting together student handbooks. You charge them for the student handbook, but the time to assemble, copy, you know, do, do the work to get it to a student handbook doesn't get charged. So, um, it just comes to how much could that possibly be? And I, just, Mr. Ward and I just talking, you know, it probably wouldn't be that much. And it's not, it, we'd have to change the contract with the charter schools to probably have wording in there or allowing a five percent overhead charge or something like that. And then, again, to your conversation, you know, what about just a phone call to talk to somebody? Or, or maybe, maybe a regional person stopped by their school to answer a few questions or look at something. Yeah, I mean, absolutely.
Right, I mean, he charges us. If I call your office and ask you a question, there is billed by the, by the increment, yeah.
Absolutely.
And, and they're, but they're used to, but they're used to, to tracking that. And, and we, and we don't track that on a daily basis.
Charge extra for you.
But I remember seeing an invoice one time, conversation with Mr. Dog, fifteen minutes. I was like, I only talked to you for six, you know?
It gets rounded up.
This is years ago, you know, but I still remember it, you know, so.
Gets rounded up to the fifteen.
Like, like how often does that happen, you know, with the charter schools? They call for some bit of question or expertise and we provide that. And, and I guess I, I just, I just struggle with this philosophically. I go back to, people say, oh, these charter schools operate so much more efficiently. Look at their overheads, so on and so forth. And I go, yeah, that's because they're calling us and getting six minutes' worth of a service instead of hiring an employee to do that. And then-
Yeah, they, they get the benefit of our cost of this fee.
That's right.
They, they do, they do get that to tap into.
Yeah, and I, I just don't think that-
Be nice if we could tap into the state the same way, right?
That's right. I just, I just feel like that doesn't get captured. And, and I, you know, I, I think there's a very compelling argument you could make, whether or not the legislators would actually agree with you, cause I know how pro-charter friendly they are that, um, but-
And that, that's why I get to the administration fees, is getting a little bit more money out of there to, to cover that stuff.
Yeah, it just doesn't cover the, our cost of-
Yeah, it doesn't.
What our employees are doing for that.
To me, the easiest thing would be to nudge that two fifty over to five hundred, because that, that number probably hasn't changed since the day they set it.
And that's how, how long ago was that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, the issue with the administrative fee is a fifteen or twenty-year issue that's been going on. And it was, it's much better than it used to be. When it first started, when we had the first conversion charter schools and Round Lake had a incident at school involving a child, it was a shooting or something of that nature. And the student services department and the security folks and they had fifty people at the charter school. And I said, why are you sending all these people to the charter school? They're charter schools now. They're not part of the school district. It says, oh, no, the kids are in our school district, so we gotta go provide these services. Well, that was before anybody was being billed for anything. And it was mainly a mindset of trying to get administrators to understand that this, that these are charter schools now. We're not supposed to do everything that we used to do. And I know that even today, some of that's still going on, on occasion. And we're doing a tremendously better job of billing for it than we used to be. I mean, it used to, nothing was recovered at all for all these services, all the payroll services, accounting services, everything else that was done. But, um, whoever said it's unlikely that the legislature would make the change? Those changes about the administrative fee percentage came in over about four years. Every year it went down. It was, you know, it started, it was ten percent, oh, then it was seven percent. Then it was two and a half percent or whatever. And every, to my knowledge, every challenge there's been about that, since you go before the State Board of Education, the governor, to make that decision, I don't remember there being many governors that overruled those kinds of fee charges that were in the statute. So I, I, I think it's certainly something that's worth discussing with your legislators, but, uh, it would seem that that would be not a high probability of success.
I wouldn't think, I wouldn't think the fee amount could go up above five percent, but to get that student cap up a little bit might be helpful. I mean-
We do have à la carte services that we offer.
Yes.
And now we're right.
Yes, that we're now collecting fees for.
Yeah, that was-
And à la carte.
And in twenty, and in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we collected eight hundred and thirty-one thousand worth of products and services, above and beyond the admin fee and the mandatory fees.
So you just have to be able to, to create that, uh, a process, I guess, for everybody to, to bill à la carte for these phone calls that they're getting or the emails that they're responding to that are, you know, maybe circumventing because it doesn't exactly match one of those services? Like, I'm not, I'm not paying, I'm not calling, calling because I'm sending somebody to a, a workshop, you know, and you're gonna fill in for the workshop spot. I always have a question about History Day, you know, and, and suddenly now you're providing support about History Day. And then the kids show up to History Day and then, I don't know, we're giving them trophies and medals and things that- Do we pay? Are they paying for those? Are we paying for those? You know, go, go host your own History Day.
At the end of the day, I mean, I'm just saying, there are, yes, so.
Yeah.
And, and build a relationship. A thirty-minute phone call is one thing, but if it's, if they're abusing it, that would be the interesting part. Those, are the charter schools abusing? Cause then you tell them, no, your charter school can do your own thing or get your own help.
That would be the department by department to do that.
I think it'd be almost more expensive to provide documentation, billing and reconciling than either we're gonna help them in this thirty-minute call or not.
Right.
Tell them to go get their own help. Or build a relationship and talk to them. Next.
Thanks, we need, we need, oh, go ahead, we need a, we need a break.
Oh, we need a break. Okay, this is gonna be really quick. So, so, um, because of, um, the reopening and whatnot, Mr. Mock, uh, I had asked him to delay an audit.
Yes.
And he was kind enough to be able to do that. And then in the meantime, in the last couple of weeks, I've gotten knee-deep in an issue that suddenly I think needs to come to the board and we need to discuss whether or not we want Tom to audit, which I think you could do in this kinda gap you have, by the way. And it has to do with facility uses. that suddenly I think needs to come to the board, and we need to discuss whether or not we want Tom to audit, which I think you could do in this kind of gap you have, by the way, and it has to do with facility uses. And facility use and in-kind, um, contributions, so what has, what is abundantly clear to me is, the in-kind, we had ninety-five of those last year, you could weed through those really quickly. You can, you could do a sampling of about five, and I can help you with that, the five, and then what we don't get is, the dollars, when we charge a fee, the fees come back to the district. When it's in-kind, then it's up to the administrator of the school to make sure the in-kind was actually done, which seems odd to me. And there's no way to report back to the district that in fact that in-kind was completed, so I also had an idea about that too, but, I don't know how to solve that. But I I just think that rather than it being, I'd like to know, and I don't have the time for it, to dig into some of these in-kinds, find out what was the in-kind, was the in-kind completed? And so we even have a sense about whether.
What kind of in-kinds are, are we, we're talking about gifts, like, or donations?
Okay, so, so I'll, I'll give you an example, Leesburg, your school, Leesburg High School, they have, we have an in-kind relationship with the church, and that in-kind was, they would put a sound system in, and they would put bleachers in, they've done everything, because I've seen it.
Yeah, okay.
And that's an in-kind.
Okay.
And so, so the, yeah, I'm not saying that it's wrong that the administrator would control that, but the bill, the district is billing it, and, oh, we're, excuse me, we're not billing it, and I think we ought to be billing all in-kind, and then once in-kind is proven, then they get a credit, that's what I think the easy fix is, but I don't know if the board thinks it's enough, rises to the level of really looking into his recommendations from Tom, or I've already got some recommendations, so.
So they pay upfront, and then they get.
They'd be billed upfront.
They do.
They'd be billed upfront, when the expiration of the, of the in-kind, the period of time, actually, we were thinking that if you got halfway through, and you haven't done anything when you're in-kind, Mr. Ward and I spent a lot of time brainstorming this, then you may be pulled, like, you can't use it, but you can't get to the end of the the use, we have a situation right now that expired yesterday, and they're just now starting to work on it, so, and it's a fifteen thousand dollar fee, so my advocacy is we bill upfront, that somewhere along the line, it's evaluated, administrator, if we're gonna, if we take, here's the part that's a little bit odd to me, and Mr. Ward and I discussed this, that it really needs to be on the administrator for these in-kind, because they're on the facility, living adding staff, but there's gotta be some way to communicate, so, you know, on the form, you could add a block that says, the administrator has to send back to the school district, and then we would inform them that your in-kind's at risk, but I've only been dealing with one situation, and and I don't know if it warrants, Tom looking at, is it an issue across the board that we need to fix, or can we fix it based on this one issue, which is, in my mind, we bill for all in-kind, and then we credit it when it does.
And that's just a way to keep track of it.
Just a way to keep track of it, right.
Otherwise, it it might never get to them, and you get a reduced fee upfront, and then, and maybe some.
We had a similar situation with the Little League ball fields at Eustace a couple of years ago, where they had, we had a, it's also an in-kind ritual agreement, and they were supposed to hold up their in-bargain, and they didn't, and they didn't, and they didn't, and they didn't, and they continued to let them use the facility, and now it's not, the relationship is severed, and the the program isn't, it doesn't exist anymore, and that's a detriment to the community, but at the same time, how long do we let them continue to say they can repair the fields or keep them?
And the value of that field, because it's exactly the one I'm talking about, it's between it and the high school, it's fifteen thousand dollars, that is the fee, for this private entity to use it, and now, as it so happens, it's my understanding that they are making the improvements, but it went from January to August before they started, and shouldn't they have been doing some work before that, it's kind of the point, and if they don't do the work, what's the recourse, right? So you give them the in-kind, and there's been no feedback whether or not we've really got the benefit, now, again, I'm not certain that it's a big deal, because I know for a fact, like, in your school it was, I know for a fact, Eustace is, and so, is it something from fifteen thousand fee we asked Tom to look at, um, I'd asked, there's nine, I guess there's ninety-five, you can call those pretty quickly, I I looked at five that I asked Mr. Ward to send to me, I don't know, I haven't seen it, but, okay. Well, instead of sending it to me, I'd much rather that the board approve, send it to Tom, and let them dig into it and give us a real quick.
Yeah, I think it's hard to to really speak, uh, with much authority on this one, so you've got all the information, so I'd I'd be willing to ask for some more information.
I'd like for Tom, if y'all don't mind, because I just don't have the time.
I I think it's needed, I've got a couple of those phone calls about the Little League and the high school field, just recently, and those are some lengthy conversations, and I think it would just settle a lot of things if we knew exactly what had been done and what hadn't been done, then we could address concerns from the community more adequately, because I had little response for this person, because I didn't know what the status was of the in-kind, so I I I agree, I think it's, I think it rises to someone needs to give us some clear direction so that we can speak with good knowledge when we're asked about it.
Well, and it's more than just the, this is identically the same situation.
Yes, sir, it is.
And the same situation, so we, there's three of us, and and I think that we can certainly give you that one to look at, and then, and then, uh, Mr. Ward and I had already identified four others that, and it's quick, I mean, I'm telling you, but it, but I just, I just don't have time, and I don't, and I think it's more appropriate that Mr. Mock looked at it for us, and reported back to us, rather than, um, than me being involved in it at this level, I just think that it's not appropriate.
I agree, I think it would be much better received if it came as an independent study from the auditor.
That's good.
Yeah.
You have any work on?
So, are we okay with that, guys?
Yes, yes, but, you know, I I guess I would like to also consider the other side of that, okay, because I've I've heard from some groups that meet in in schools in my district, and they say, they come in there on Sunday morning for church, and we're wiping down all the tables, because custodial didn't come in and do that after ELC on Friday, you know, there are crumbs on the tables, or, uh, you know, like in COVID protocols, they're supposed to come in three hours early and start the air or something, but their custodial wasn't there, you know, so, um.
But they're getting, they're paying, or they're saying?
They're paying, they're paying us for work that now they're coming in and and doing, you know, the custodial work, that I don't, I don't think that, you know, we're 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 paying, we're charging a custodial fee, there's not actually a custodian there.
Okay, that's terrible, I mean, that's also terrible.
So. Right, right, so I, so I think that's the other, the other part of that, you know?
So, so, and we had this computer program that we're using that you're booking online.
Right, right.
And that was, um, uh, Mr. Ward and I were, Mr. Ward mainly, was going through it, and he, Mr. Ward, I don't want you to spend like a zillion hours on it, I mean, really quickly, you can evaluate these a couple. Get with Mr. Ward, because he's already done like ninety percent of the work.
Okay.
And then, and then, um, and then, but then with one voice, you can come back to this board, because it's thing, this thing is wearing me out, this Eustace thing, I'm just telling you, and so, I'd like to, I'd really like to hear the skinny skinny from you, you do an independent.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but then I also think that in our in-kind, or excuse me, our fee-based, that whether they perform or not is a whole different story, so that's a different discussion, that's not for you to look at. I'm really, if, for this, and that little bit of window that I know you have in time, it would be the in-kind, and it did, and and the form I looked at identified what was supposed to be done.
Yep.
But then there was no accountability on whether it was done or not, and the timeliness of it, so, there you go, this is Eustace High School and the Eustace, um, base, Eustace, um.
Heights.
Heights, baseball.
Baseball.
And the Eustace High School baseball, yeah.
And I can tell you, they were working yesterday, because I actually drove past there, that's just how much I've been getting feedback, I actually rode past the fields yesterday to see.
But then what happens is, is, this is on the Little League field.
No, they were on the, not the, there was, well, you could see work had been done on the Little League field, but there was no one physically present at that time.
Last Tuesday, they were physically present with tractors and.
Yeah, you could see that they mowed.
Okay, the confusing part of this whole story is, so, they didn't use the Little League field, they used the high school field.
Correct.
We have a Eustace, we have a utility, a facility use on, and Chad, I know you've been knee deep in this too, we have a facility use on the high school that expires eight, one, twenty-one, and there was, there was a facility use at some point on the Little League field, but they're working on the Little League field, not on the high school field, because the pictures that I was sent today.
I think they worked on the high school field yesterday, that's where I saw people working, on the Eustace Heis.
Well, praise Jesus, anyway, can we get an independent, is all I'm asking. Everybody's good with that, so, Mr. Mock, if you want, if you want twenty minutes of everything I know about it, I'll be happy to send you on your way.
Let me get with.
Mrs. Cunningham, I know who's been involved in it, I know that Stephanie's been involved, so interviewing three board members really quickly might send you in the right direction, but I'm also solution driven on this. So, if we have, if we have it, I think we have an issue of accountability.
Yes.
And then what would be your recommendation to resolve it, which I already shared with Mr. Ward, and Mr. Ward shared, we came up with a plan, so that would might already be solved, that's what I'm saying, it's not a lot of time, we just need one voice to come back to this board. Yeah, okay, boom, okay, we need, we need to take a five minute break, can we take a five minute break?
I don't know, red on or off.
Do you remember, do you remember a guy coming in to the roundtable, talking to the hall?
That wasn't one that they finally broke with, because they were really, they were taking away from it, and you'd be back in the room, and you'd promise that you would go do this, and do this, and do this, and he never did, and then they'd have cut it.
Well, that's the part, and that's what, that's what he's talking about.
Putting a timeline in, and he holding their feet to the fire.
Speaking of Kruger, I can never get non-organic milk. Speaking of Kruger, I can never get non-organic milk.
Really?
Yeah, I just got a notification, because I've got a work coming today, and they have to do a substitution, asking if organic is okay, every single time.
That'll solve a lot of your.
That's my substitution service.
Is it organic?
Yeah, and the organic seems like, oh, still good to me than the regular, I don't know.
My granddaughter, she's a little baby, she drinks organic, and it is definitely different.
Right, it's different.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am, I did not, but thank you very much, I appreciate it. I'm Molly, nice to meet you, you're working with Mrs. Smith, okay, wonderful, we're happy to have you in Lake County, thank you for your expertise. I've heard that you've offered some good, good help.
Yes.
So we are most appreciative, yeah, it's always nice to have someone come in with a different view and some areas of expertise to help us move along, so I certainly appreciate it, yeah.
Senior. And I appreciate your input too, it's nice having educators.
Yeah, it's, it's a little different, yeah, yeah, um, I did serve on bargaining, but not for LCEA, I was on the, yeah, for a number of years, so I, at least I know the format, yeah, yeah. Thank you, I will. Hey.
Let's draw what question?
I'm just peachy.
Oh, that read that, that form? Oh, oh, the in-kind? I know what the in-kind is.
What did I do? What did you, what did you say? I did. Oh, okay, well, yeah, that's because I got to be at the meeting, though, that's a little different environment.
Disney, which is your favorite company in the world.
Disney?
Yeah, you love the Mouse House, don't you?
Why, what did I?
I don't know, I I feel like, I feel like, uh, we had some early conversations, we were like, oh, Disney, that doesn't count for anything.
I was by the relatives, you know, I was in Atlanta.
No, no, Orlando's really where it's all at.
Actually, I work for companies that.
Well, they're moving to Orlando.
There's towels down there near Disney.
They're moving busy corporate, all the executives are all moving to Orlando.
Yeah. When I was with Global Park Operations, we we operated it out.
Yeah, they're all moving to Orlando, and I guess the average income was like one sixty-five.
Part of my role was auditing documentation against actual practice.
Change the dynamics of like.
What's happening?
They've already raised the.
Whether or not, so then then you come up with a discrepancy, and you figure, okay, what should prevail, should the practice prevail, or we change the documents to match practice, or the people need to go with what's written? That was, that was wonderful.
Well, actually, this week, he just moved, this month, he was spending.
Actually, you know, a funny story, I was like, my junior year of high school, and my junior year of college called home and said, guess what, mom, you're not gonna believe this, but I actually found a person who makes a living as a magician. You told me that you couldn't do that, that you wouldn't make enough money as a magician, and it's not a real job, so I just found somebody who actually does it, so I don't need to go to law school anymore. So she left, and I made a pretty good living doing magic shows in the school, my wife was teaching, and I was making more than she was, as a magician.
No, that's it, it's a rotation now, he's in his third year, now it's handy.
Yeah, it's neat that it does that, we don't do that. I mean, I guess we typically do that, but our hands on is a lot of it, so.
And John was so funny, he got to Naples, and I thought, Naples is to be a class.
Yeah, you know, because it's a show business, so.
It's true, that's what my grandma said.
Well, Naples is like, really nice.
And then when you figure out my hourly rates, because, you know, I could go do a kid's party and a magic show for thirty minutes, and walk away with a thousand dollars.
Three cents, and so, so maybe that's what they did five cents, or two fifty five cents.
Yeah, right, totally.
A converted motel or something.
Like University of Florida, I was writing my greatest booker, you know, uh, because they were always looking at alternative programming for students instead of going to hang out at clubs drinking on Friday nights, and so at the student union, I would go do a magic show for a thousand people.
He just took a fine time, so that was like the last one, went there, and I was like, I.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, my my rabbit, I mean, rabbit, and it was, and. Yeah, it was, it was fun, but you know, it just doesn't really get you the the pension for retirement, and you know, health insurance, you've got to go on the private markets that I get, you know, so, so, there's some drawbacks, which is, work clothes not always steady, you know, I'd go, sometimes I'd be like, oh, my God, I haven't done a show in six weeks.
I'm like, I was wrong.
That's right, yeah, yeah, so there is that part of how you manage that, okay, work is is heavy right now, but I gotta bank some of this, because, you know, I might go late time around the show.
Okay, we all ready? Okay, all right, we're down to the last three point oh four superintendent.
So at your request, uh, Mr. Chairman, I added our safety protocols, um, just so that, um, they were in front of you, and that it was very transparent to the public and to all of our, um, teachers and other staff, that we are maintaining all of our safety protocols, um, that were so successful last year, um, with the the one change, which I'm sure you're all aware of, resulting from the, um, recent governor's executive order that masks will be optional. So I I just wanted to assure the public and our staff that all the other safety protocols are being maintained, we've also updated the document to show the, um, upgrades to all of our AC systems, um, that will be completed, um, I think we're down to about three schools that they're finishing up, I was told by the end of the month, everybody will be done, um, with that new AC system, that air filtration system. Um, everything else was pretty much the same as it was previously, um, all aligning with the CDC guidance in regards to, um, hand sanitation, um, we're continuing the contract with Disinfects, which is that, um, uh, disinfecting coating that sprayed on all hard surfaces, uh, schools just received today the schedule of when they'll be coming out to start all of that, they've been maintaining that through the summer as well, so. So that's gonna be continuing, um, and everything else is pretty much the same, the only thing that is still up, um, and I'm waiting on some more information on is in regards to quarantining, um, there are some counties around us, there was a call on Friday that, um, with all of the superintendents and found out that sixty-seven school districts, so you've got sixty-seven versions of quarantining going on right now, uh, for the most part, different health departments are giving, um, differing guidance to school districts on the numbers of days and who quarantines and who doesn't quarantine, and so a letter was sent on behalf of all school districts to the, um, Department of Education to work with the Department of Health at a state level to set some consistent guidelines so that you don't have people doing differing things, so. Um, we, I had a meeting, or another phone call this morning with our local health department, they're gonna be getting back with me on, um, some further guidance on that, so, um, I'm not sure when we'll have that, but we'll amend the protocols based on whatever guidance we do get from the state level in regards to the quarantining, so what you have in there is what we had adhered to last year, um, is what is currently in the CDC guidance, but that, there, as I said, there are some changes possibly coming to that. And we are gonna be reinstituting the testing, so the health department will be providing the PCR tests for our school clinics again, we started that at some point last year, and then they had to discontinue it just because of the pickup for the labs, we're trying to get a rapid test instead of the test that they're gonna have to take to the lab, because it was a time delay, by the time we tested on day six or seven, um, and they got the test back, the ten days were up anyway, so that didn't really, um, prove to be that beneficial, so we're working on that as well, um, so, more information on testing, which will be coming, he did assure me that we will be doing testing at our schools for those that want to test at our sites, and we'll also open up any more vaccination clinics if we have some people who, um, have decided that they would like to get the vaccine, and they're having trouble getting into the health department, or or one of the local pharmacies, um, they're willing to set up and come back into the schools to provide any more vaccinations that we'd like to offer to our, uh, staff and students, so, um, we just need to to know if there's a need, and we'll address that need, and otherwise, um, expect some changes possibly to quarantining, um, what you see in here may or may not. Um, we just need to, to know if there's a need and we'll address that need and otherwise, um, expect some changes possibly to quarantining, um, what you see in here may or may not be the final version of that. Um, and with, with that, I think those are all the updates on the safety protocols.
With the success we had last year of the pre-testing, that's not available this year.
We don't have a, enough capacity to be able to pre-test all of those, um, one of the things that I asked is how many tests each school will get.
We were able to pre-test our employees and then we were also able to pre-test any, any of our, um.
That was a different rapid test.
It was a different rapid test, but at least it was a test, I mean, it kept.
I remember now. Mm-hmm. Beginning of the year, mm-hmm.
We get a proportional start, we were able to keep some of it out, anyway.
So I asked this morning how many tests each school will get because there could be a large demand and if it's going to be one way that we maybe are able to reduce quarantine time, we would need abundance of tests. So that's, was my question today, so they'll let me know how many each school will be provided, so that, um, we can kind of maybe establish some protocols in regards to the testing itself within our school clinic, so. More to come on that, some follow-up questions that we have.
Okay.
Is there any consideration, I know you said the quarantining procedures might be different, but is there any consideration to having students antibody test if they're not vaccinated to not have to quarantine? Cause isn't that the purpose of even the vaccine is to develop the antibodies? So if a student has had COVID in the last three months, six months, nine months, it just depends on the age of the student or the age of the person that's got it, if they can show that they have the antibodies, would that not be the same thing as showing you have the vaccine? Or similar?
Yeah, it's a, a different test, which I think that they're still doing that one at the mall, are they still testing at the mall? That was the antibody test that they were doing.
My question is.
Sites are still open.
Right, if they get quarantined and then could they have an antibody test to not have to quarantine, I don't know if that's being considered.
Um, we didn't talk, we were talking about the PCR test, we didn't talk about the antigen test, but I'll add that to my list of.
Thank you.
Of questions that, um, when he calls me back to see if that's not a possibility, that would make sense.
Yeah.
It's okay. Um, I, and I did wanna mention, there's, this was a great document, thank you, um, Smith, for providing this, I think it's a very good feedback in here. A lot of that you'll see is, um, actually in the safety protocols, um, a lot of the questions were about, or a lot of the feedback was about mandatory masks. And so we certainly wanna make sure that our teachers understand that, that we must comply with the executive order on that. And some of these are things that, um, at the school level, they'll wanna talk to their administration about because they're very school specific, but, um, I'll go through these and we'll address any of them that we can, if we need to update the protocols to include them. Um, and certainly, you know, we'll work with you to make sure that these are addressed, so, thank you for providing that.
That was great, appreciate it.
So I have a question regarding the mandatory mask protocol because I read the, um, executive order from the governor and what I read was an executive order that mandates parental choice. Um, so I don't really understand why we couldn't have a standard of mask wearing and allow opt-outs by parents. Parental opt-out is simply signing a waiver, much like we do with, um, sex ed class or photographs for public, there's lots of times we do opt-out. And that would be still within, I think, compliance for sure.
So why would we?
Because.
If mask, okay, so mask, for those that wanna wear masks, I would support that, by the way.
Well, I think.
And, but, it's almost the same thing, you're just saying it reverse.
Saying it reverse because.
If a kid wants to wear a mask, wear a mask, if you don't wanna wear a mask, don't wear a mask, that's parental choice, right? And so we don't need to.
Whose choice is it though, that's the question, because if we send a six-year-old, is the teacher gonna make the, the six-year-old wear the mask or does the six-year-old get the choice?
The governor's pretty clear about that part, so we're not, there's not going to be, the teacher, the school district is not making that choice, it's parental choice.
Right, it's parental choice, but not child choice, so when the child takes the mask off.
Well, you're making an assumption that a parent who has a dependent child is making the choice for that child, it's for like.
Yes, that's their job.
It's their job.
Right, so if they want the child to wear a mask, but the teacher doesn't believe in a mask, and.
The teacher doesn't believe in wearing a mask.
I don't know what the teacher.
Are you just suggesting that if this.
The teacher's not making a value judgment about this.
No, but then the child, there's a six-year-old takes off a mask, who.
So is your question whether or not the teacher's gonna tell the child to put the mask back on?
Yeah.
Well, no.
Right, because it's not mandatory or.
If she did, she would be violating the order.
No, the order is that, the order reads that you have to follow parental rights. And the parents that want to have masks for sure have the parental right to have the child wear a mask. Um, I think that if you believe in the science, which I've tried to present, um, masks work better in, um. Masks work better in a group situation and they definitely work better when the, it's a source control, the person who's actually sick, which you can't know, obviously. Um, we're dealing with a variant that is a different virus, like it is mute, it's a mutant, it's now as infectious as chickenpox. So it seems like, like, I remember chickenpox running through the classroom. So it seems to me if we're starting school with just a baseline of everyone, we think you should wear a mask, but if you wanna opt-out from that, that's fine, because that, the American Academy of Pediatrics is recommending it. The CDC is recommending it, our local health department is recommending, as much as we can encourage, um, the, uh, the people at, at, at Epi, that Mr. Moore, he's recommending mask wearing. I mean, if you, if you believe in science, there's a two percent hospitalization rate of children under seventeen, like I, it's too hard to find that rate. And our twelve-year-olds and below are not vaccinated, they don't have any protection. So, I mean, in, yeah, I think they're at risk, um, so I mentioned transmission, less than twelve, um, I think that, I mean, I can't not believe in the science. I've read it all, I've looked at it, um, and I don't, I, I see, what I'm seeing is a very politicized issue that is, um, unfortunately being politicized as opposed to being a health issue. Um, and, uh, as Mark also mentioned, and I had another teacher reach out to me, or to parent reach out to me, um, they can't afford to be hospitalized. Like, it's expensive, you know, you lose, you know, your kid goes in the hospital, it's a big deal. So, I mean, to me, masks are, um, uh, just a typical public health measure, they're proven to work. And, uh, and so we, if we were to set a standard with an opt-out, I think that we're following guidance.
I do think, in a, in a situation where you're in a classroom setting and you have twenty students in front of you, especially at the meet your teacher events, and, and speaking from a household in my family that's very conservative and wants to wear masks in regards to the virus and the spreading of the virus. One, my nephew's not gonna go anywhere in public without his mask on because he knows that his family has those values, so even whatever age they are, if that's the environment that they're coming from, I truly believe they'll wear it just because the biggest influencer in that child's life we know is their parents at that point in their development.
Yeah.
The other thing I will tell you is as a teacher, I think that it would be really, really great of us if we recommended to the teachers to really pay attention to that, you're gonna have kids in your classroom whose parents want them to wear masks. And I would know, if I had one of your children in your classroom, in my classroom, and they came in and they took their mask off, I would go over and just gently say, hey, yep, you wanna put your mask back on? And if they said no, then I would reach out to you and just let you know, hey, when Jace is coming to school, I noticed he's taking his mask off, but I think it's a manageable thing inside your classroom versus having to have the opt-in or opt-out. And then if, then if Jace goes to school and he doesn't wear his mask, now I've gotta go look, is he on my form and maybe keep track of that, where it's just more of a gentle touch in a classroom-based environment that can be much more easily implemented versus having either one, either mask or non-mask having to sign some opt-out waiver. I just think we know better in this classroom-controlled situation which kids are and which families and, and we still have our plexiglass and we still have our social distancing, we're still doing all of those.
We, we have, um, we do have plexiglass.
I was gonna say, I just read these, that's what it was in here.
I thought that was what was in there.
The desk ones, we do have some of those and I've let, I actually sent a email to the principals last week, instead of you have teachers that want the desk ones because they didn't want the elementary stand-up ones, um, to let me know and we'll make sure, and anybody who's requested them, we've gotten them for them, so, yeah. Middle and high still has theirs, hopefully, so there's back there at the warehouse, but we have them to get out, schools that want them.
Yeah, I, I mean, regardless of what the wording says, I think, I think the piece we'd have to look at is the intent, you know, and, and so, I think the intent was, the default is involuntary mask situation. Um, which, I, I think you, uh, kinda started to, to touch on, on my que, one of my questions here, just from an operational standpoint, is, all right, so little Johnny's mom says, hey, I want him wearing a mask, he's six, okay, so he, he keeps taking it off. So, to what level are we expecting the teacher is going to provide those reminders to little Johnny or the communication to Johnny's mom to say, he's not wearing the mask? I mean, like, like, I mean, I've had a kid in my class who, who, okay, just got new glasses, okay, and so I've got, I'm providing the reminders, hey, put your glasses on so you can see that a little better. You know, but this is kind of a, instead of being a one-kids sort of situation, now it's a eighteen or twenty-two, you know, uh, to what, to what, what level of expectation do we have for our teachers when it comes to that scenario of? These six moms are saying, hey, make sure he's wearing his mask.
It's a good question, only because we don't want anybody, a parent to come back to a teacher and say, why did you let Jace not wear his mask today?
That's right. That's right.
And I don't wanna be liable for that.
Yeah, I don't wanna be liable for any of these deaths.
We haven't had anybody, right?
Hopefully, there was only seven.
How many student-to-student transmissions did we have last year? And I know we, we had masks in place last year, but I would argue that that was.
We did very well, we, we really did.
Very few, and could we, was there, was the contract trace, tracing that we did limited? Were we even able to determine whether they came from school setting or if it was somewhere from outside the school that they were exposed to it, we don't know.
The only way we know that is through the parent reporting to us exactly where the child was and how they contacted it.
Right.
Usually it was within the family or they were at some, some other event.
Right.
I can add, um, I, just yesterday, cause I actually hadn't seen it, um, there, there's actually a really nice, um, CDC study, like the CDC puts out MMRWs, but whatever, it's like their journal. Um, they put out a journal study of Florida that showed, we actually did do, and did do very well as a state and, um, almost, and it didn't break it down by county, but as a state, most of the, um, infections were out, were, were coming in from outs, from the outside community. Um, but there was a, a statistically significant, um, difference between groups wearing masks and groups that didn't. I, you know, I could give you guys all the data in the world, but everyone can cherry pick data.
Yeah, and, and I totally respect that, that this is something that you're passionate about and that you've done the research on. I also think that we have done a stellar job, and you just said we did, and I think that our county has done an amazing job of vaccinating, probably, we're ahead of the state by some four percent or something like that. But I also have my sources, so I don't wanna get into a debate about, about, um, we're not gonna kill, we just said just a minute ago, we don't gonna kill kids, whatever, and that's not gonna happen. I mean, that's a gross exaggeration of how it reacts in, in juveniles. So I think that our protocols are good, that's what we're here to discuss, I think that we've decided that it'll be handled in the classroom is a brilliant idea, I think parental choice is the right decision and, um, and then we just have to, with due diligence, do the same as you did last year, we kept every school open. And, and that is to be celebrated and it's because of the protocols, I think, so.
I would just, I would just.
And, and I'm not diminishing the whole mask thing either, I mean, cause.
I agree, I agree, my, that, there, there have only been seven deaths in Florida, um, so that was an exaggeration, I agree, a little political license.
Moment, you had a moment.
But I do worry about the fact that it's, it's like that, that eight number that it's spreading instead of spreading from two to eight. Honestly, if we were, i- if we were still dealing with the alpha variant or, which by the way, just so y'all know, I didn't even bring up, like, the alpha variant swept through a year. And I know we went through it, but we ba, we, we hid it or we pushed it back with our vaccination rates at the time and the fact that the vaccines were working really, really well against that variant too. Um, I just wanna let you know, I'm not usually, uh, inflammatory, I really do try very hard to look at all of the data and come up with, um, a fair assessment, but I will tell you, the, the spreading of this concerns me. If it spread, if it does spread the way, um, uh, the way chickenpox spreads, I think we could have a big, but whatever.
You know, and, and last year, I think that after.
There's only one of me.
So, no, 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 we all share the same concern because I remember last year, every day I look at the numbers because we had made that decision to open our kids up, our schools up. And, um, so that rides on our shoulders, like, not just yours, on all of ours.
Yeah.
And, um, but I do believe as, I believe then and I believe now that the parental choice is the right decision, we win the mask and it worked, and I don't, and I believe in masks, but I also believe in parental rights about this issue, so, that's where I land.
So I, I guess I'm still stuck, I, I don't know if I definitely know what our level of expectation is for teachers in enforcing the parental choice.
What Stephanie said.
Well, I'm thinking, it, like, I think, I heard that question, cause then what, when do we do, but I would imagine the teacher needs to communicate with the administrator, I'm having some difficulty with this situation and then we could, I mean, I think everybody's gotta be pretty sensitive to this, even when they're developing their class lists, even when they're considering what their teachers, what are your teacher, are your teachers maskers or non-maskers? Are they, you know, when you're putting people together, I think it's gotta be a, I think it's gotta be a collaborative process, and if there is an issue that arises that's a sensitive issue, I'd imagine the teacher needs to get support immediately, that would be.
Yeah, cause, I mean, the, the follow-up question for a parent is, okay, so I got Johnny, I, I'm sending him to school in a mask, but you've got him at a table with a bunch of unmasked children, is there a mask and a no-mask section of your classroom? You know, so, I, I, I'm just anticipating all this, you know, the range of, of questions that parents are gonna have or, or expectations from us.
I would wonder, I would wonder if we couldn't open the doors and get kicked off and see what the level of that is that we're receiving.
We did talk a little, a little bit about that, to see, cause we don't know how, know how many will come on, so if there is a way to, um, you know, once you know who wants mask and who doesn't, is there a way to group them accordingly or, you know, you can't really do that because you have no idea if you're gonna have. Those could be one or hundreds, you know, that come with mask on, so, the thing that I did ask the principals to do is just, um, and they, they do such a good job about, if parents have concerns, if they, they, they just need to talk to the school administrator, they need to talk to the teacher and just say, here's my, here's what I want, here's what, what helps me to feel most comfortable and, and we're gonna work with people, just like we always do. Try to accommodate them within our control to the greatest degree possible, so, um, I, I do think it, it is that, being very sensitive and being understanding that, um, people are coming back, they're afraid, we have teachers that are afraid. Um, and how do we help to give them the greatest assurance as possible and, um, you know, there's no way for a middle and high school teachers to, to know who's supposed to have on a mask and we've got a, oh, possibly a hundred and fifty kids, you know, then, at that age, you, kids just have to do what their parents have told them to do or what they feel comfortable doing. At an elementary classroom where you only have, you know, eighteen, twenty-two, hopefully, um, it's a little bit easier to manage and I do think it just, is every parent making sure that their teacher knows what their expectations are or what they're asking and our, our teachers, as they always do, are gonna take care of our kids.
Um, other question I've got operationally is, uh, water fountains and I, I know we've got a line in here about limiting for the purposes of fill, filling personal water bottles, I know we had a number of issues pop up here and there and, you know, I think, uh.
I think we've got filling stations in every school now, the only issue we.
So I guess the question is, what happens when a kid shows up without a water bottle, without a personal water bottle, cause that happens.
I've worried about that too, I've worried about it on a, on a daily basis when I drop my kids off with a water bottle, I think, and I, I think to myself, they're, they're not gonna let a kid not have a water bottle, but.
No, I, I think.
That's a guarantee, I know, that's what I wanna know too.
But then what happens is that the water fountains, so are they not covered this year? Uh, you know, like, they were all covered with garbage bags in my school last year, so, uh, you can access.
They, they should not be using the water fountains, that, that was part of our protocol.
Yeah, well, it says in here to use them for the filling of water bottles, I, I know the education foundation and other groups provided water bottles for kids that needed them last year, so.
So, I guess.
If there's a, if there's a need, we'll certainly address that, cause certainly we're not gonna let a child go all day without any water, and again, teachers will take care of their kids.
Well, that's not our intention, but I know what, what the phone calls were that we received last year.
We, I did get one that, one call that I needed to get engaged, it was in my district and we were able to get water, they didn't have water bottles and they got water bottles and it was done. I mean, so, but, but parents need to let, I mean, they're our eyes, parents too.
Have to communicate, they have to communicate.
We're, we're at the school board about the water bottles, I mean, let's get the administrators doing their J O V, let parents be engaged, if there's an issue, they can't resolve it in the school, which is where it all starts, then it comes up.
Yep.
Kinda oughta work.
Right, it oughta work, but I think that's exactly what was happening last year, is I was getting calls about water bottles, uh, you know, we saw the email that came through after summer, you know, that bubbled all the way up to your regional executive director to have to get involved in that one. But, I, I mean, my kids, um, I got a lot of them, statistically, one kid is gonna forget their water bottle a day and so, um, and so, and my, I know my kid's not the only one without the water bottle, who normally carries one every day, so is there water available for that kid on, for that, for that single day? You know, it's not like, you know, you have to provide that kid a reusable water bottle every day.
We need to have a case of water bottles, is what you're saying.
That's right, that's right, cause that, that's gotta be available, you know, the teachers be able to say, oh, Johnny, you, you didn't have. That's right, that's right, cause that's that's gotta be available, you know, the teachers be able to say, oh, Johnny, you you didn't have your water, no, I I forgot, I left it in the van this morning, that's okay, here's one for you. You know, at the same time, I don't wanna get to the swinging pendulum so far that we're providing every kid a bottle of water every single day.
Right.
But, you know, it's it's gotta, it's just gotta be uh available, particularly when you got the heat of August.
I I think we can get a case or two of empty bottles in every school.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have that on.
Done, it's actually done, okay.
And then the the other, the other question I have is um just about bus holding in the morning, I think that a lot of the protocols in schools. Uh, where to hold the kids on the bus until you reached pretty much bell time, but the problem was, and they weren't able to take advantage of breakfast, statistically, they just wanted enough time. Kids were bringing their breakfast to the first period class, supposed to eat in the cafeteria, if a kid even did that, some kids said, I don't wanna bring my food to class, so then they would not get breakfast, because they're held on the bus. So I'm not sure um if we've got some sort of standard for that, cause the kids, you know, cause. Schools are using their cafeterias as a holding space in the morning, and they're saying, for distancing purposes, I don't wanna create another cohort, you know, cause they're already co-horted from the bus. Now I put them in the cafeteria, now they've intermingled, which is different than their lunch assignment, so I think that they were trying to take that intention of trying to just maintain those cohorts. So far that kids couldn't get breakfast, they didn't want breakfast. So that might be.
So the kids are not being held on the bus, they are um getting off of the bus, they're going to breakfast if they want breakfast, if not, the the language in here, um.
Okay.
This was a big conversation that we had with the principals, so that they're not holding them in in one particular area, but they do have designated places for kids to go, and every school, that's different, and so there's no way for me to put that in a directive, so.
Okay.
Schools said that they will let students know where their report in the morning.
Okay.
They're going to breakfast, they go to breakfast.
So the bus holding should be done this year, that was just a last year thing.
The bus holding?
Right, where kids were held on the bus until like seven minutes before the start of the day.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they shouldn't, they should never have been on the bus.
All right.
So, should be exiting the bus when the bus arrives.
I hope, I, this is, I guess, another one of those pieces where I know what our intention is up here, but by the time it gets down to the school level, the decision has been different than what we were expecting was gonna happen.
But that's almost why they ought to be making those decisions, and then we adjust it as a problem.
Yeah, but the.
You know what I'm saying? Because every school is different, and every culture.
Yeah, but every kid has a right to breakfast, but they weren't getting it, because they were held on the bus to maintain the cohort.
I know, but super junior said that was never the agenda.
But they're they're not staying on the bus.
Not this year.
No, they didn't hold it.
But last year, there were schools where kids were held on the bus until minutes before the first period, so they physically could not get breakfast unless they brought it to class.
I'm I'm not aware of the situations where kids were held, being held on the bus, I, that would hold up the bus route, so I don't know sure how you.
At middle school, it's the last route, so.
Yeah.
They were able to do that, so there was a middle school in my district who did that, and.
I know it was two years ago, I didn't, I don't remember it occurring last year, but.
So last year was a COVID thing, they said, you know, to cohort the kids, you can't send them to the cafeteria, okay.
I'll I'll check on that, I I know who you're referring to, I'll check on that.
And so the the last question I have, just about, ju- just to understand what the expectation is on, um. So in here, we're saying that schools will schedule meetings, clubs, parent events virtually when feasible, so does that mean we're we're going to the direction once again where we're not having? Um, parents, volunteers, school events on campus, or like, like. Somebody's having a an honor roll ceremony in the first nine weeks, are we saying that's not gonna happen with parents, or uh let's say your after-school drama club is not meeting? Because, you know, cause that's a club, so should that be virtually, I'm 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 not sure what.
You know, I don't know that we can say that right, I mean, we almost need to see what happens.
But we have it in our protocols.
I know, I know, right now, but that's the safety protocol, right?
Right.
But if we could have in-person, then have in-person, but I think that let's get open, and nine weeks, we'll have a good sense about.
But we, so so my question is, we open next week, so next week, our parents.
I know, we're not gonna have honor roll, we're not gonna have honor roll in two weeks.
No, but our parents walking their kindergarteners to class.
Yes, they are.
On the first day.
We are, we are limiting parent access, the same thing we s- we did last year. Um, I did not get a specific, because I know that schools wanted some flexibility, some schools wanted volunteers back on their campus, they're very reliant on volunteers, and so. Um, they were gonna encourage volunteers to wear masks, and we still have that, of all, anyone who enters the school campus does get the temperature check. Um, and if they've been vaccinated, they're, hopefully, we're encouraging that. So in regards to um back-to-school events, we have some schools that wanted face-to-face, but they've they've um. They've spread them out, so that there's not a large group gathering at one time, so they've already figured out how they're gonna do. I don't know, alphabetically, or however they've done that, by grade level, they're only having so many, they've spread them out. Um, some wanted to do them virtually, and so I didn't, again, there's no one size fits all, allow the schools to be able to decide with their faculty and staff, what they feel most comfortable with. So I tried to just make it more generic, to say that if there's I E P meetings that can be held virtually, if that works, then do it that way, if it needs to be face-to-face. Then provide a safe environment for them to come and do that. Honor rolls, we saw lots of different things last year, we saw some that, um, again, small groups, by grade level, by classes, they they um. Allowed maybe one or two parents to come, instead of a whole family coming, um, again, they encouraged masks, they were very social distanced, um, because it wasn't the space to do that. But everybody wanted to do different things based on their level of comfort and really what the expectations were of the community, and so that's why it says, when feasible, when possible. And and not a clear directive that says, you cannot have any volunteers on your campus, because we know that last year, that was, that was, that was hard for some schools. We have a lot of volunteers that we rely on, so.
So that's, that's, so that's really a school decision on all of those questions.
It it really is.
So, I I.
So we're not really providing guidance.
So so I guess, I guess then I, I think too many folks just point to, the district said, this is the protocol, we can't do this ceremony, we can't have you do this. We cannot have a parent volunteer, COVID, 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 but in reality, then the school down the street does it exactly the opposite, I think, you know, we were. So I, and and where I go to that inconsistency of messages, the very last week of school, I I, my board member comments, I talked about how exciting it was to be able to attend some ceremonies. And that schools were finding ways to do it in person, and then the next day I hear from a school, we're actually not doing anything in person. I go, but but the school three blocks away is, is COVID that different, three blocks distance? I don't, I don't understand, and and so. I guess when you just leave too much to the school.
And it's happening all over, really.
I I. How do you psych?
The same thing happened with us, we had parents that um really wanted to go to kindergarten graduation and couldn't go, but they could go to field day, but. You know, and and it's, it's confusing, and there's, there's not guidance based on any, like, like, it would make sense if there was guidance based on viral levels.
Well, that's what I was thinking in my mind, that's what schools are gonna do, because you look at.
What school?
If you look at every, we get a report every day, we get a report every day of the infection levels, an infection level at a, at a school that's really affected, like we just had with um.
But no schools did.
Mount Royal, where they went to a Christian camp, and forty kids came back, and they're quarantined now, so you would say, Mount Royal's got a little problem, that administrator needs to react. And the sanitation, everything needs to be different than Leesburg that had one, or my schools that had nine, so I don't, um. I don't know what to tell you.
My question's kinda similar.
I mean, we're giving guidance, we're saying, right?
So, um, if I could have a minute?
You've been very patient.
Thank you. I think first and foremost, we have to realize that there is no possible way that the five of us can sit here with the. Expert opinion of the superintendent and her staff and come up with a set of rules that are going to work for every single school, for every single parent, for every single child. Trust me, that is simply not going to happen. As far as students, you know, one kid having a water bottle, another one hap- doesn't, I mean, we gotta re- we gotta respect and. Allow the people that are in those positions to use some common sense. I would certainly hope that there would never be a child that was allowed to spend all day with no water bottle. I can tell you, I can't think of any teacher anywhere that wouldn't do something to make sure that that child had proper water.
But the problem had happened.
Well, it may have.
It did.
Okay, I'm not doubting that it did, but you know what, when a situation like that occurs, what needs to happen is that parent needs to take it to. The school and say, listen, my child was here yesterday, they didn't have water, how can you assist me? Because we have water in the cafeteria. I mean, I can't tell you the number of times I've walked in the cafeteria, and maybe I paid for it. Um, but I had a running tail, if a kid didn't have water, you give him a bottle of water out of the cafeteria, I mean, there are ways around these things. We we're never going to be able to sit here and come up with every possible problem and give a one answer to it. And I I hear what you're saying about, you know, kindergarten, graduation versus field day, well, again, I don't know what. Was in the mind of the person that made that decision, but I'm sure if you spoke to them, they have some rationalization, maybe it was a high number of infections in that school, I don't know. But as a board member, I am very uncomfortable with trying to make one rule that fits everybody everywhere. I am also afraid of. Reaching into the future and trying to make a decision about honor roll today before school ever starts. Because we don't know what's gonna be the case in nine weeks, you know, the opening of school itself, that very first day, is a serious undertaking. And once those people get through that very first day and we get everybody home safely to the people they belong to. Then I think we can start to think about those things, like, okay, honor roll is coming up, how are we set up for, you know, having a program? I think the superintendent and her staff can give administrators direction and parameters, and then the, within those parameters, they need to come up with a method. Of meeting the needs of their community, whether it's, you know, one grade level at a time, all the A's or whatever, you know, but I think. That it's just not gonna work if we try to hand them the rule. They need to survey their parents, they need to find out what they think, do they, are they comfortable with that? And you know, the other thing you gotta remember, if you got a thousand kids in a school, that's two thousand parents. Four of them may be complaining and everybody else is happy unless you do a survey, you don't know who's unhappy. So I think we have to take all those things into consideration, so while I believe you all have valid points. I don't know that we as a group today can come up with a solution for all those problems, and I wanna say one thing about the mask. I am the grandmother of a two-year-old and a, almost an eight-year-old tomorrow. My eight-year-old will have on a mask, because that's the way his mother is, he went to camp every day this summer. He was one of three kids, I think, in a group of twenty-five that wore a mask every single day, and I know this because they had cameras, and I would go check, because one of my questions was. What is he gonna do when he leaves home, is he gonna take it off, or what's he gonna do? Every time I saw him, whether it was on a field trip, even in the sprinklers, the boy had his mask on.
That's right.
So I think that parents are going to have to make the decision that is best for them, and then they're going to have to, um. You know, speak to their children, or do whatever it is they do to instill in their children, this is what I want for you. Um, I think it goes back to a question that arose with me a few weeks, a few weeks ago. As a constitutional officer on this board, we all have a certain obligation, whether it goes necessarily with our personal opinion or not. But when it comes time to vote as a member of the board, we have to uphold whatever rules are in place. And then we have to make the best decisions that we can make to ensure that we keep everybody safe within those rules, so I don't want you to feel like you're the only person up here, because you're not. I think everybody here has those concerns, and we all believe strongly that it's our duty and our responsibility to keep people safe. But we have to do it within the perimeters that we're given, and I think that's what we're all trying to do, so you're not alone, you have four friends with you.
Not you all.
And thank you.
Yeah, my, that was that my only suggestion, I think, after this conversation would be to make sure that the parents know that they need to have those discussions with their administrators, I think that some of them. Don't necessarily want to go to school to have that conversation, or they're they're fearful of going, and so if we could just encourage, if you have a question, if you have a concern, I'm concerned about backpacks, if you want to be truthful. Because last year, they only had to carry around four tu- school topics a day, but they didn't have lockers, and so my kids brought home these gigantic backpacks every day, and then they switched them out. And this year, they're gonna have all six or all seven, and so are they gonna have lockers, but that's not, that's not this, that's me making sure that I communicate that, like, what are we doing for these kids that are carrying around? Seven different textbooks every day now, versus the the half and half that we did last year, but I think just really encouraging. The communication piece this year, and for your administrators to be very sensitive to that, I think that's always important, but it's probably more important this year than ever.
Agreed.
Well, I, I mean, to that point, and and I I totally recognize you're not gonna be able to create a policy or a bullet point for every potential scenario here, I'm, I am really just trying to be. Prudent in thinking about what are some potential situations based on what has been brought to us this past year, what are the phone calls I received? Because we're gonna encounter those next week, and the board isn't meeting again until, you know, to to talk about some of those things. But I I guess, I guess the piece I'd like for people to know is that most of these decisions are school-based, that if there is a meet the teacher or not a meet the teacher, it's not the district telling you to do that. Or whether you will have volunteers or not volunteers that first week on campus, that's not the district telling you. And and that's, that's where I, I guess I get just a little nervous on these these protocols, that I think there's a bit of a mixed message here, the first one says that the parents and visitors will have limited access to the school campus, including parents walking students. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, lunch, volunteering and mentoring, the next bullet says, well, then you can, you, volunteers are encouraged to wear face covering, so. Which is it, do you get volunteers or you don't get volunteers?
And the answer is, yes and yes.
Yeah, sort of, depends on the school, depends on the school, this school says, volunteers are okay, down the street, that that school says, ah, volunteers are a no-go, and it's not necessarily based on the COVID numbers of the school. It's just about what's necessarily the most convenient for them.
Yeah.
And and so, so, I don't know, I I'd almost like to say that that it's it's school choice, that way, when somebody calls, I can say, the district didn't decide this. You need to go to your school's principal and ask them about their COVID protocols, because.
Isn't, isn't that what you would say, though?
No.
That's not what it says.
You wouldn't say that, oh, I always send them straight back to their principal, and my principals are always, yes.
If it's a school-based decision, then yeah, then I could do that, but but the, I guess, the the board level says, you have limited access to the school campus, so.
So then, I tried to distinguish between visitors and parents just coming in, having lunch with their kids, versus people that are. They're volunteering, you have, I think, you have teachers who want those volunteers in their classroom, and you have teachers who don't.
That's right.
And so for me to say, or for the board to say, to Miss Cunningham's point, well. Nobody gets a volunteer, that's where we were last year, and that was, that was concerning to people who really wanted. You know, the volunteers, my volunteer is vaccinated, they're willing to wear a mask, they're willing to do whatever that I want them to do as a teacher, to not give them that opportunity to bring that individual in that they. They they are so reliant on, and um, it just didn't seem reasonable at this point, and so I think, um. I, that's why there, there's two separate lines, is because I was trying to distinguish between the two, I.
Which page? I'm sorry.
All right.
No, they're not numbered, it's under additional safety protocols, the first one says, parents and visitors will be let, have limited access to the school campus.
Oh.
Um, again, we didn't wanna say no access, because that wasn't reasonable either, so again, you know, just some flexibility there for them to make some school-based decisions, or for teachers to make individual decisions on what they. Whether they want individuals in the room or they don't want them in their room, and then volunteers on the school campus will be encouraged to wear a face covering.
And and I'm a hundred percent in total agreement with all of that, I'm not not disagreeing with any of that, I I just, I just, I I guess I just want this thing to say. It's it's school discussion, that that folks know where the source of that decision comes from. That whether, if your school's having a field trip, it's because you all decided to have a field trip, if you, if your school is not having a field trip, it's because you all decided not to have it. The district did not tell you, you cannot have this, these volunteers in your classroom, the district did not tell you that.
I do, Mr. Todd, I do think, though, that we've got a little bit, let us get open, I think that that we're not having field trips the first day of school, I mean, so.
No, but, but we are having some of this next week, we are.
This week, we're having it, my daughter is at one of those right now.
So like, this is so timely.
At a, and no, at a meet the teacher, like, with hundreds of other kids, like, and I've already been to one this week at Leesburg High that had hundreds of kids in a, in a gym together.
Okay.
Yeah, which all, so, so.
Well, oh, I'm just saying.
And they wore masks or didn't, I mean, there's a lot, but, okay.
Not, not, almost no few wore a mask.
Did your kids wear masks?
Uh, yeah.
And they were, you used your choice, and if parents decided they didn't, then it's fine.
I guess, sure, you could, I mean, I disagree with you.
I'm I'm just asking for the public to know the source of the decision, that's all I'm asking, I'm not asking for us to make the decision for them, I'm just saying that this week and next week.
Can you. Could you just put a bullet at the beginning of this up here, like, it's our priority and that schools, individual schools will monitor their, their decisions based on, I don't know.
On, why are we, at at the end of the day, to tell you the truth, it doesn't matter what you say, it always comes back to us anyway.
Yeah.
But if we get an issue, we get it to the administrator, and we get it to the area director, and that's our job, I mean, that's what I do.
Right.
I don't try and solve every problem, I get it to the people that can solve the problem, so we should be maybe that conduit or lightning rod, and just feed it out, I mean, but to put down here, we're not responsible, blah, blah, blah. I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, they, the the public, as they should, we are, I mean, right? And we, and we rely on the superintendent and competent administrators to execute, but if it goes sideways, that doesn't alleviate, just cause you put in like a disclaimer, we're not responsible.
I'm not saying we're not, I I just want people to know where the decision came from.
Okay, I think, I think that could be much.
That's a school, but, I don't know why, I don't know why we wanna hide that, why is that so controversial, that we don't wanna tell them that the decision is up to the school?
I agree.
That's, that's.
Well, I don't think it's just blatantly up to the school, because the school is over, is supervised by someone.
Yeah, and the area director.
So the school doesn't have the final word.
But this doesn't either, this doesn't have anything of.
But this doesn't either. This doesn't have anything of.
Okay, put on there, we are not at fault.
That's what I'm, I'm not trying to have any legal disclaimers to who's at fault. I just, I just wonder where the decision lies.
This is like, you.
The decision to host and meet the teacher, whose decision is that? That's the school? Okay. Whose decision is to have volunteers, uh, for the first, you know, four days in every kindergarten classroom because these kids don't even know how to pen, hold a pencil the right way or make sure they get on the right bus? Is that a school decision or is that our, so, I mean, or?
School.
Right, these are all school and it's for individuals.
Right. Well, and it says like schools will limit the size of things and that's not occurring. So like, why do we even have this this year? Is it really even useful? Like, I, I had a teacher reach out, I had a parent reach out and say there was fifteen hundred kids at East Ridge.
What do you think, Eric, Eric?
And like they weren't wearing masks. So like, you either just like let everything go. I just don't understand the purpose.
But like, like this line though says, schools will schedule meetings, clubs and parent events virtually when feasible. So,
of this.
Based on that, no club can meet because they could virtue, they could do all of those virtually, you know? Does that mean that the, the Spanish club doesn't meet the first week of school? Or does that mean, I don't know, clubs or are those athletics? They don't meet either? Well, I guess not feasible to meet virtually, but, um, I, I don't know. I mean, th- this says you, you will meet virtually.
And, and they're not gonna meet virtually this year?
So.
Like, was this when, when fee- okay, so maybe the word feasible isn't the most, or, or, when you choose to do so. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure what you're looking for, but.
Cause would the club sponsors say we can meet virtually other than face it? Like, but that, is it, is it, are you trying to like leeway for who's running the meetings versus who's?
Yeah, the club sponsor is gonna be making those kind of decisions based on also their, their thoughts about it, their personal feelings. And they should be able to, by the way.
Personal feelings.
Okay. I'm gonna let you.
Okay. Well, let's all just say a prayer about how the school.
I guess, I guess I'm just, you know, I'm also just holding in my hand the four hundred and twenty-five teachers who responded to the survey in a matter of hours and how passionate they were about some of these things. And I don't know. I mean, it shows the process then at this point that all these teachers need to get together with their administrator and say, school district isn't telling us one way or the other whether to hold this event. And so we need to rally around and, and make a decision.
I think what the teachers will do is they will go in and speak with their administrators and they'll discuss the pros and cons and they'll come up with what works best for their campus.
Yeah, that's exactly what they should do.
And I think, I don't wanna speak for Mrs. Smith, but I think she would do the same. They gotta, I mean, it's a tough situation. Everybody's in a bad spot, but you have to discuss it and come up with work, with what works best for where you are at that time. And, you know, any given campus could be in a different place.
All right. So the, the last piece I wanna talk about, um, I guess is a question, uh, related to protocols and things and so forth. Um, vaccine encouragement. Um, so obviously we've seen what our neighboring district has done to encourage employees. Is that a collective bargaining executive session that we need to have to kind of decide whether or not we wanna follow suit as an incentive type purpose or?
Can I tell you the truth? I think that giving an incentive for someone to make a health decision is outrageous. And the fact that Orange County offered two hundred dollars is outrageous. That's how, that's where I land on this.
Regardless of what they think, we've got people on this.
If you wanna get the vaccine, go get the vaccine. We're, we're, I'm just, I'm just trying to be competitive in the ballgame here. A hundred dollars a month.
I know, I know. It's just very frustrating when everything comes down to personal choice, but personal choice is causing
Look at somebody even.
this Delta variant spike. So it's a little frustrating to hear everyone tell, uh, uh, other people to go do stuff, um, yet no one else is willing to take personal responsibility. And that's as simple as, as having masks and it's just a covering on your face. And anyone who feels like it's against your personal liberty can certainly like opt out. And it would be within the law that I haven't heard the lawyer ever tell me that, that setting any sort of standard would be outside of the executive order, which was a massive overreach of government, by the way. So.
I don't believe I was asked that question.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat what you said, Ms.?
He said, I don't believe I've ever been asked a question about.
Would that, would that be within the executive order?
Would what be?
Would having a standard of masking or, or any, as long as there's an opt-out for parents?
You can't say that I'm gonna discriminate you against you because of your disability, but if you sign an opt-out, I won't discriminate you anymore. I mean, you can't.
Right, but we're not talking about that, right?
By the negative of what you're prohibiting from doing. Pardon me?
But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the specific executive order.
Yeah?
And that executive order was written specifically about parental choice.
No, the statute was written primarily about special choice, parent choice. This, this is the first of the implementing emergency orders relating to that statute. And the governor, before he signed his emergency order, he made it quite clear of how he interpreted the statute. And that he interpreted the statute to be that you would not mandate that people have to use certain medical treatments, conditions, prohibitive, prohibitions. You were not allowed to demand that people weren't allowed to wear masks. And he said if anybody did, that he would take action. Well, Broward County, I think it was, is the one that did. And that resulted in the emergency order being signed three forty-five Friday afternoon. Now, in the emergency order, it also has, and what I, what I expect that we'll see probably today, if not tomorrow, he said that the Department of Education and Department of Health would immediately issue rules and regulations compelling enforcement of his emergency order. So I, I expect that we'll see some more specifics coming down the pike here very shortly. But, uh, I think those actions by the governor and his emergency order, uh, lead to one thing that if a school district attempts to demand that individuals wear masks as part, as a condition of going to public school this year, that he's going to enforce the order with the penalties that are in there, which is reduction of funding.
He's certainly in funding. So is, is a parental waiver a mandate? Is when you have a parental waiver a mandate?
If you're told you can't demand that certain actions take place because they are discriminatory, or if you're told specific actions can't take place because we're not going to demand that individuals wear masks in certain conditions, then, uh, I don't, I think saying, well, we're gonna say the negative of that. Well, you, you have, you can't wear it, but if you ask, we'll let you off the hook and then you can wear it. And if you're asking me what the, how the law is going to be interpreted, the governor is going to interpret that as a violation of the law. If you wanna get involved with a lawsuit with the governor over whether or not that you can compel masks, then you'd be the first of the sixty-seven counties so far to do that. I doubt many of those other counties are gonna be inclined to do that.
So it really is a compelling, like, I didn't read it that way. So I just, I just wanted, it, clarity is helpful.
I think you, you look at what the specific statute says, you look at what the governor's order says, you look at what, what the governor has spoken about it in the last week or two about this particular topic. And I don't think there's any read, regardless of whether you can make a tremendous argument that, oh, well, that's not mandating this. It's only saying you can't. You know, if you wanna make that argument, then I think you can be assured that you're going to meet some resistance and probably a lawsuit from the governor's office if that happens.
Okay.
I mean, if you wanna wait to, if you wanna see how that's gonna work out, there'll probably be at least, at least one county that's going to attempt to do something about it. Wait to see what happens when they do it.
Okay. All righty, all set?
So, well, I'm kind of, no, still asking my, my question though. Okay, so I, I mean, it doesn't, I guess there are some other components in here that I just wonder have to go through executive bargaining, uh, through collective bargaining. And since many questions are on this paper about what to do for COVID leave, our, our teachers expected to exhaust their entire sick banks. You know, is that kind of stuff, stuff we need to decide through executive session and create an MOU?
Those are some things that we need to talk about. Those actually just came up. I've reached out to Mr. Harnsworth this weekend as those conversations were just starting to happen and looking at what other districts are doing. I have a meeting with, um, Ms. Kathy and Elizabeth after at two, I think, today. Um, and so I would imagine that that will be a, um, one of the things that we'll be talking about today and how we wanna move forward with that, whether that's gonna be handled through bargaining or what we're gonna do with that. So just kind of looking at, um, what other districts are doing. And I know that, kind of those around us, some of the things that they're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All good? All good? Okay, more to be complimented. Mrs. Luke.
I was just going to welcome everybody back. We're looking forward to getting back to your routine and that's, that's what I will say.
Well done, Mr. Dodd.
All right. Yeah, so, uh, I think in a few weeks, um, the school district data is one of our topics to discuss. I just want, I was hoping to throw out ahead of time to, uh, cause I know it's probably my recent information gathering, but I'm interested in, in hearing about AP Capstone versus ACE diploma, uh, success rates, um, as, as that being potentially a, a portion of our data talk. And then, uh, the other piece, I just wanna kind of throw out there, which, uh, once again is a testament to the pay as you go. So I don't know if y'all remember this handy chart that like plot us this out thirty years ago, but like here's your argument against bonding right here. Because it locks you into whatever you've bonded for. And now as I'm looking at the time period on here, or in a few years from now, what is in our five-year plan? Our needs have changed a little bit, that now because we're at pay as you go, we can pivot and meet where the need is currently as opposed to what we thought it was going to be. And, um, yeah, so that's remarkable. Um, that's it.
Just kind of him.
I just have one question. Um, I listened to the superintendent's, um, five important things yesterday, and you mentioned that Rhymes and Beverly Shores have a different starting time. I just wondered why that was. Is it because of busing?
No, it has to do with, um, the, their DA status, I think, and they had to have an additional hour of instruction, I believe it was, or forty-five minutes of instruction. And so we, their school day had to be altered. For Beverly Shores, not for Rhymes. Rhymes, I think, was a, yeah, is a busing issue. But Beverly Shores was because of their DA status.
I thought they weren't in DA now.
Well, they just came out as of Friday, so.
So why this year would they have a different schedule?
They didn't know that when they made the bus schedule.
I think they're retaining the.
They just want to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ob- obviously that additional time made a difference for them, so they're gonna keep that, um, for next year.
That's all. Thank you.
No, I'm good.
All good? Okay. I just wanted to compliment the superintendent over first of her super Sundays, which are gonna be every Sunday she's gonna come out with, uh, um, right?
Every Sunday.
And the super part is superintendent Sunday. You'll get the connection. So, so I think those are really quick and informational and, um, and getting a lot of positive feedback. So, well done. To, to Mr. Dodd, we just went through the capital plan and I've been on this board. We didn't have two cents to rub together. And, and largely in part because of Stephanie and Mark primarily, but also Dr. Burns and, and Mrs. Cunningham, that the pay as you go is recognized. And when you have the money in your pocket, you can spend it. And, and you see the debt numbers coming down, which many dollars are going back in the classroom. And the other day, um, I don't know if any of y'all, most of you probably know Kerry Baker, but I'm at lunch with him and he's with some other elected officials and he goes, Bill, tell them what you done. I had no idea what he was talking about. And it was the schools and the work we're doing that we've been, we've paid for, that we didn't borrow any money. And there was a legislator who said, that is just not done in other school districts. So kudos to all of you guys and, and the culture that with the superintendent's support and Mr. Ward's support, that, um, we just don't borrow, we pay for it. And in one day, two thousand thirty-one to be exact, we will have no debt. So, okay, superintendent?
Uh, one, one quick thing. We've had a, um, because we just got the FSA scores and we do want to bring those to you in a workshop and go over some of that. It was recommended that we move the workshop that was scheduled to the, on the sixteenth to the thirtieth so that we've got time to prepare for that. We, we just got them late on, actually it was Thursday afternoon. And so it's gonna take us a while to really analyze that. We'd like to bring to you kind of the highlights, lowlights and what the plan is moving forward. So we need a little time to do that. Which means we'll move the village discussion to the thirtieth along with the, the data report for you all if you are available.
So the workshop on the sixteenth.
We will cancel the sixteenth and move it to the thirtieth.
That's fine. Right? Good. Okay, good. Okay. Right? Anything else? Anything else? Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Nothing for me.
Okay. All right, board, meeting adjourned.